Chairman, and with me are...
Emily Dennis, member.
Yes, I'm the member.
William Clark, Planning Director.
Jane Gibson, Clerk.
All right, Mrs. Lynch is not going to be with us today. But it's one on DVD. We're going to go right into Citizen Speak. And Citizen Speak gives citizens an opportunity, State Board, on matters of relevance to be paying for. And we don't want people to discuss 131 Elliott Street, the Hendries Project, or the Milton Hill Project, because we're going to have an opportunity later on to speak on those. And I guess the same would be true with the 683, 685 Brushhill Road preliminary subdivision, or the 37 Canton Avenue Scenic Road application.
But anything else?
Other than that, are there any citizens who would like to be heard?
Richard Shea. I come before you as not as a town meeting member tonight, but as a member of the Pastoral Council of St. Elizabeth's, and representing the Realty Department of the Archdiocese. It was suggested to me by the Town Planner that I come before you and ask for the withdrawal of the article that was put in, that supposedly we, it is our article, and it was tabled back to the Planning Board through recommendation of the Warren Committee, and that we would like to do away with that article, and not be responsible for that article.
All right. Well, the article actually was a Planning Board article that we submitted, which would have relevance to your site and not much else, although Mr. Clark points out that there were a number of places in town that it might have relevance to. And I think that if St. Elizabeth's is not interested in this particular article, we will leave it on the table until St. Elizabeth's determines, and the Archdiocese determine what they may want to do with that lot. It is Zone C, and you could do a nice little subdivision there.
Well, I...
Or you could build a nice cottage, a nice stone historic cottage with spacious grounds.
We could put up anything here, an orphanage, or whatever you want to call it. But I believe that the article was attributed to us.
Right.
And we are not in support of that article. That article is detrimental to the sale of the property, the way it stands now.
All right. I think we could vote that we will not resubmit that article.
Well, as a practical matter, the article's been taken care of. Town Meeting voted to refer the subject matter back to the Planning Board for further report. You're saying you're not interested, which is fine, and we don't need, if Town Meeting asks, we can simply say that there was no need to bring it forward. But the article itself is done. There is no article anymore. Town Meeting took care of that. So if you're not interested in pursuing the matter forward...
It's true. Absolutely true.
Then we don't need to even talk about it.
There's no...
No, I didn't come to talk about it.
It's very helpful for you to come and let us know that you're not interested in pursuing that, and we're done.
And I think the Board can, I can indicate for the Board, we can't take a vote because it's not on the agenda, but I think I can indicate for the Board that we're not about to submit a new article for that site without consulting with you and the Church. So there's nothing on the table.
All right. Fine, thank you. And there's a letter, I believe Bill got it today from the Archdiocese addressing the situation.
All right. Well, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
And we hope that you do something creative with that nice historic building, so that the town can treasure it for many years to come.
Well, it requires a lot of money, and I haven't seen any come forward with a big check to do that. Would be nice, but there hasn't been anybody coming forward with a big check. As of now, the parishioners of St. Elizabeth's are paying for that building every year. And after a while, you do get tired of paying for something that is not beneficial to the parishioners, who are putting up the money.
But there is an opportunity for a division into a number of lots, which you can do under the existing zoning. You don't need anything new from us.
I believe we brought that up originally, and it was a unified vote of the, or opinion of the Board, that six single-family house lots with four bedrooms each would not be a good thing to put there at that corner. And that was what the Board agreed with. It wasn't even my idea, but the Board did agree with that fact, that six single-family lots on that corner with 14,000 cars going by every day was not a beneficial thing to do. And that was the Board's opinion. So when you say that, it's still in my mind, what you told me before.
Four. Four would be, four would be nice.
One would be nice.
With all due respect, I don't think he's here tonight to debate how many houses to put on the lot. I think, I really appreciate the fact that you came to clarify the position of St. Elizabeth's on that. I think that's extremely helpful. So if there's something that you need us to help work out in the future, we'd be happy to discuss that when you're ready.
Well, I'm sure that the Archdiocese will be back. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming in. Anyone else want to do, want to speak as a citizen during Citizen Speak? If not...
Can I ask a point of information, please?
Yes.
What issues on the agenda are you asking for comments about at this point?
On the agenda, we've got a scenic road hearing at 37 Canton Avenue at 6:35, five minutes ago. 6:45, 131 Elliott Street, the Hendries Project. We're going to hear some comments, but we're going to, we're going to discuss some procedure also with respect to that.
So, well, I actually...
And the Milton Hill, 36 to 50 Elliott Street, the Milton Hill Project, we're going to receive comments on.
Are you currently taking comments now, then, on...
Not on any of those.
Not on any of those? Okay.
Okay. Anyone else, any other citizens? All right, we're going to move on to the minutes. And I read the minutes, but I seem to have misplaced them. I made some, oh, here they are. These are my proposed changes.
Those seem reasonable, and I'm going to have a quick look at the changes. While those are going around, I'll move the minutes as amended.
All right. We'll wait for a second, because we like to do these things by the book.
Well, that just gets the words done while they're taking a chance to look at them. Which book?
Roberts Rules of Order.
Just wondering about the book. I want to know which book I'm doing.
All right. Okay, a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, adopt. We're going to start our public hearing on 37 Canton Avenue, which is a scenic road application. The scenic road law requires that when people breach a stone wall along a scenic road, or cut down trees of a certain size, that they get approval from the Planning Board. An 18-foot opening is generally presumed to be reasonable. So where, who is the applicant, and why don't you come up and quickly tell us about it?
And then, it looks as though we have some additional material in our yellow folders. Is that correct, Bill? Is this new material?
That is just for the, that's for Mr. Dumbey, and his, I guess, his armpit locusts.
I always wanted to know what things are.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Matt Talbot, with my wife Jen. We are here seeking approval for an opening in a stone wall. 15 feet, I think, will be sufficient, is what I was asking for. With the application, there should be a plot plan. My intention was to have James Dougherty, he is bricks and stones mason, use the existing stone to turn, it's kind of a retaining wall, the, it's that height, the lot itself, turn the stone wall in, to continue it in, and make room for the driveway itself.
Have you reviewed this, Bill?
Yes.
And what do you think?
I've actually seen it with Mr. Lane, the town's tree warden, and we didn't have any issues with it, the way it's designed. I also did it with, checked the zoning components with Mr. Frondack, full of us have signed up for the driveway opening. I know that there are issues coming forward today from the town's Historical Commission.
Okay. Let's, why don't we hear those issues?
Please.
Where is the historical? Ah, welcome. Why don't you guys move over and... Mr. O'Donnell...
Steve O'Donnell, Chairman of the Historical Commission. Couple of questions first, one of which you just answered, that would be the width of the opening. I'm assuming this is an A&R buildable lot that we're discussing?
Yes.
The diagram I have, which may not be the most recent, shows the driveway coming in approximately in the middle of the lot.
Yep.
The stone retaining wall that is there is actually two different walls, which join in the front of this parcel. The right-hand end towards number 31 is a stone wall with a flat cement cap. Above five to six feet in from the new lot line, it transitions to just a stone wall without a cap. The Historical Commission would like to see that driveway moved towards the right of the lot line, so that the driveway opening would then separate the two types of wall, as opposed to having a wall with a cement cap for five or six feet, and then a wall without the cap to the edge of the driveway, and then on the far side of the driveway, again, that wall. If the driveway opening replaced that juncture, we feel it would be, would have much less of an impact on the streetscape. I measured, and it may not be 100% accurate, but the distance between the right lot line and the first large maple standing outside the wall is 16 feet. So a 15-foot opening would fit in there.
Between the maple tree?
Between the tree and the right lot line. So in other words, instead of the driveway coming in and curving to the right once it's onto the lot, if the driveway went essentially straight out onto Canton Avenue, avoiding the curve on the lot.
Did you measure the distance between the other maple tree, or the other tree that was further back? Because I think if it does that, it might...
The conifer which is on the lot would interfere with the driveway placement. That's a conifer...
It is a 24-inch tree. That's a pretty big tree. Maybe they could cap part of the wall.
Well, that would be an option. I mean, we think it's regrettable it's going to happen at all, but it's going to happen, so...
Originally, it was drawn as he's saying, coming down the line, but he would put the wall right against that big tree, and my concern would, it would have to interfere with all the significant roots of the tree.
You might lose two trees rather than just one, just for the cap. But if you were the cap part of the wall...
I, that is certainly a...
Or, I suppose, remove the cap.
Or remove the cap.
On the right-hand side, so that the cap ends at the lot line.
Right, cap ends at the lot line.
So, not the new lot line.
Just remove the part of the cap that would be adjoining the uncapped wall on whatever side of the driveway it is. And it's probably about six feet, seven feet, eight feet?
It's about six feet, I think, yeah.
Roughly, yeah, roughly.
It's about eight feet of cap. Well, that seems, that seems easy enough to do.
That's something I'm definitely willing to do, if...
I think it would look, rather than having a cap come into your property...
This is how we originally had, because I saw that in a perfect world, that would be the perfect place to break it, but it puts us right against that big tree, and I'm afraid that that would kill the tree.
Is that the one of your...
Yes, this is actually the one with, this one shows the trees.
So I think that what we're hearing is that we're going to leave the driveway where it is, but with the, in consultation with the Historic Commission, the applicant is going to remove the cap.
Okay.
And you're going to use the stones to transition in, because you've got a couple of feet of height.
And get, yes, and get the like stone to match, if I need any more.
Are you getting this, Jane?
The part of the wall that's capped, do you own any of it?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, not the walls, the towns, I believe, but yes, the lot. It does turn in onto the...
Yeah, there's about five or six feet of, that come into the new, the new lot.
I know that if you look at the plan that was in your packet...
Yeah?
I did highlight the lot lines, I did color the driveway and the house. I did look at the site with Mr. Lane, and the wall, the land is right behind the wall, so that 24-inch tree before the fence belongs to the town.
That's fine. We're not going to, we're not going to do anything to it. We're just going to take the cap off the wall.
And leave the driveway as...
And leave the driveway just as you, as you approve it, just exactly right. Okay? And we've got, run the ladder by me before you send it out, Bill.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Wait, we're going to vote on this now.
We should probably make sure there's nobody else.
Oh, who else wants to be heard on this? Yes, sir?
My name is Rob Orchard, and I am in a butter at 43 Canton Avenue, where I've lived for, well, since 1979. I understand that this is a buildable lot. I understand that you can cut, you know, an appropriate path through the wall in order to get access to it. And although this particular issue that I have may not be before the Planning Board at this point, I do want to point out, with respect to issues of scale and placement, that the dwellings, I know that it's been proposed, is very unfriendly and aggressive placement on the location. The, our two dwellings will be 20 feet apart along a 75-foot pathway, with a height that will essentially be creating a canyon unprecedented between any two houses along the whole stretch of Canton Avenue. So I, although there may not be anything that can be done, I don't believe, the house has been permitted yet, it's in a process, I just would like to say that I think the way the house has been sited is aggressive and unfriendly to the neighborhood.
Sorry, I'm just looking at where your house is.
It's a 75-foot wide lot, that's not very wide. The lot is quite narrow.
Right. I was using...
I mean, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to, on these 7,500-square-foot lots, it's sometimes tough to fit everything in that you want.
No, I understand that, but I'm also observing that the placement of the house on the lot is not centered, and aggressively positioned against my house. You don't see my house on the...
We actually have the...
I have a, I have a drawing, yeah, okay.
We've got the...
And that the length of my house, and the length of the side of the house that you're building, is considerable, with 20 feet apart, and with three stories. It will be unprecedented along Canton Avenue, on either side of Canton Avenue, on any of the zoning conditions that exist along Canton Avenue.
Unfortunately, under the scenic road application, our jurisdiction is simply on the wall. You would have to talk to the applicant, and also to the building inspector, but if it meets the zoning, then it meets the zoning.
Right. Well, I, and I don't know, because it hasn't been permitted yet.
Right.
So, we have to see.
I mean, presumably, it's...
I couldn't resist this opportunity.
...to get the driveway around, but...
It's important that you came forward, so hopefully you will now be able to talk at first.
Well, it'd be great, it would be great.
Yes, I'll try to comment.
Okay, great, well, we should, we should talk.
I was saying that, you know, presumably the reason it's close to you is to get that driveway through, so that they can, they can get to that parking area that they're creating back there. But you should, if you're willing to talk, you should, you should talk, because you will.
Right, right, good, okay.
And so, anyone else want to be heard on the scenic road application? All right. If not, do we have a motion to...
Approve the opening of 15...
Approve the opening?
Yes.
With the conditions that we've discussed?
With the condition that the cap be removed on one side, to make it consistent.
With the stones, the stones be used, and...
To turn in to the driveway.
With the turn-ins, and Mr. Clark will run the, run the approval decision by me, but we are authorizing Mr. Clark to execute it on behalf of the Board.
I make that motion.
So that's a simple motion.
I make that very simple motion.
All right. Do we have a second add?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. It's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And you will get a ladder in the next week or so from Mr. Clark.
Okay, thank you.
131 Elliott Street, the Hendries Project.
I believe we have some new information in our yellow folders for that project, too.
We do. We will, we will hear from the applicant.
I think it's in our roles and rags.
And also, it's, please, turn off the cameras at 10 o'clock.
We don't have tape.
Are we going to use the screen? Are we using the screen?
I don't know.
No, that's, that will be Ned. All right, now, applicants, why don't you introduce yourselves? And when you speak, speak into the microphone, so that we get all the, there are, actually there are three microphones, so give one to Mr. Conley, just in case, and introduce yourselves.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is William McDermond. I'm the project attorney. To my right is my client, Steve Conley of Carrick Development, and to my left is Warren Daniel, the project architect, and in addition, steven directly to my right is Paul Reji, who would like to show a few slides onto your screen at some point, when the architect is making his presentation.
All right, well, if, whenever he wants to, you tell me, because I think I'm in the way.
All right. When we last met, we made some progress in agreeing on some concepts with respect to zoning, and we said that it was our intention to present a zoning compliant building, that we were not interested in getting any zoning relief, and that is still our intention. As I left here, I, I had the understanding that as far as building height was concerned, it was an issue, but it was a solvable issue, since it only mattered of a couple of inches, and it's a wood-framed building, so we think that whatever building is put there will meet the height requirement. The second issue which came up that evening was the use of the basement element, which would house some of the commercial on Elliott Street. And as I left, I understood, and I did thank you for, Mr. Clark, and Miss Innis for sending me those notes, it gave me some background as to how that occurred, and it was helpful. I think that if the issue remains, that you cannot...
The issue does not remain.
All right, then I'll go on to the next...
I got a communication from the building inspector, saying that as long as handicapped access requirements are met, commercial space in a basement such as that is fine.
All right.
And if you walk through the back bay, you'll see that every basement has a commercial space, so...
And I'll omit that and go to the next thing, which seems to be of significant...
Can I just copy that, please?
Yes. Okay, yes.
Which, which remained of significant importance at the last meeting, was how was the architectural plan, needing the setback requirements of the PUD zoning, met? And Mr. Daniel worked on that, and did some additional drawings, some explications of what he proposes. We have those here tonight on the Board, and I believe we sent them to the Town Planner, and you may have them. We wanted you to have something before you, before we came here tonight. So, with having said all of that, I really don't have anything more to say at this point. I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Daniel, and at some point, you could just let them know when you want to show some slides.
Thank you, Bill. Warren Daniel, Daniel Architects. I'm going to use this at first for a minute to describe a few changes in the plan on the left side. We don't have that on the slide, otherwise we'd draw it that way, but I think...
Is it on these things?
I don't think, no.
All right, well, what you have is, you have one side of that which is, is non-visible to the Board.
Yes.
And we want to, we want it to be visible, not only to the Board, but we want it, it just, you see, when it bends, we lose it. So don't let it bend.
Okay, I'll hold it.
Okay, hold it.
Okay. Greatly, the plans, these three stacked plans, ground floor, first floor, and fourth floor, wow, look at that. Whoops, necrology. I shouldn't have thought of that.
And if you want to, you can move it a little bit, and since we're on wheels, we can go this way.
See it?
No, that, so that the people back there can see it, too.
Ground floor, of course, the yellow tone indicates business use. Two pieces, this large piece of Elliott and Central, and then this piece over here on the tracks. Importantly, and I'll talk in a second about these, we've taken a one-story element we had here, which was 14 feet out, and came, and 45 into this piece. That was retail previously. The reason we did that, obviously, was to create a real setback here, and a place to do landscaping, and a real public amenity park, as we've talked about. So that was the incentive there, the idea there. Likewise, the yellow on the first floor plan up above, coming off Elliott Street, would be this much, three units here, and then the fourth floor, moving up, missing the third and fourth. Three units here, and then the fourth floor, moving up, missing the third and fourth, second and third, would be changed by virtue of two units used to be here, here, come out to the face of the building, but they're setback 16 feet now, with still a bay and a setback at the corner here. I'm looking at about one degree angle, so I hope I'm hitting the points. So, that creates a setback, a step back, reducing the vertical dimension, which has been a long-term goal and interest, I think. So, there's really two new, I think, pretty important setbacks. I'll describe, I'm standing right in the wire mold here, describe them here as a 34-foot setback from the curb, coming back to this line, creating a space for a raised planter with a large hardwood tree there, a big shade tree. These are the existing...
We could put those up. Could we put that drawing up on the screen, and everybody could see it?
Okay.
Yeah.
Please, thank you.
Yeah. Oh, good. Yeah, the base is kind of obscured.
It's the stuff.
It's the stuff, yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry. We should be a little higher. I apologize for... Essentially, the, is this, is this on?
Yeah, just push it back a little bit.
This way?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. By taking the one-story element out from Central Ave, we were able to create that large planter area for a tree and benches. As you see, it's on a 45, similar to the corner tower element, what we've been referring to in the past as a tower, and showing a mix of landscaping and brick sidewalks there. The trees out on Central Ave, the four of them are existing shaped, rather honey locusts and pear trees out there that will stay, obviously. They're, the property line is that dashed line, so you can see the difference between the public land and the private land. So, that setback in plan is a, is a big change, I think, and improvement to create an amenity right on Central Ave as opposed to on Elliott or kind of dispersed somewhat. We also have the courtyard, what we've always called the sunken courtyard on Elliott Street, on the bottom of the drawing, and the slope there, as you know, am I yelling? The slope is, runs up about six, seven feet from the corner to the point where that stair is. So, maybe we'll go to the next one. This is a section, really a, a piece of the building section, the three-story wing, showing how with this configuration, the three stories plus basement moves around the whole Central Ave facade of the building and, and the Elliott Street. So, it's the, the kind of more public and Central Ave scale. I think, just to digress for a minute, the point to me of breaking up the massing more by lower setbacks, lower level, and more shorter setbacks, maybe or less, less of a setback, kind of creating a ziggurat, you know, massing, is, is sort of out of context with the type of building that it is and the neighborhood and the, the character of, of architecture in general. It has a base, a body, and a top. The top is the mansard here, and the body is the two stories of, of clobbered, and below is, is a brick base. So, I, I think that's stronger massing, really, than breaking it up more, and that's why I'm kind of pushing this, this massing. I think this is more sort of inherent with the history of the area. We'll go to the next one. This is a poor man's rendering. It's taken from the one we previously did, and I call it per man, poor man's because I cut out the four-story mansard and pasted it on the three-story piece, and then tried to kind of draw in an approximation of the setback and the look of the setback. So, the intent here, obviously, is to create a three-story element with a basement, 40 feet high off Central Ave, all along Central Avenue, and running with, into the wing and obviously back into the courtyard and the entry. So, it really is the piece that kind of meets the most public space. The rest of the building is primarily setback about 60 feet on Elliott. This rendering, of course, doesn't have the new landscaping. It shows the old base massing with the one-story addition, which is now out, so it's kind of a, a mixture of old and new information. The, I think the next idea we would, or the next development we would have is to develop that landscaping, that park area in front, a little bit more to, to show that in its strength. And obviously, this is, this is based on our wanting to get the bonus, and I think one of the things we have to talk about almost as a, a, a basic element is the eligibility for the bonus. It seems what, we're basing everything on that, and so we have to feel comfortable that, that we can get that and will get that, and we're trying to design toward that. So, essentially, that's it. Those are the points. We can go into more detail wherever you want. Yeah, that's a comparison, I guess. A before and after.
What is the percentage bonus that you want?
It's, it's about 1.64. I think it's slightly under that. I've got it, I've got...
90%.
It's a little under nine, Alex.
A little under nine.
Okay. Okay. FAR, I mean, of 1.64, yeah.
Okay, well, do you have, I don't know that we need to keep it up just because it is not exact.
Yeah.
I mean, you do have...
Right. It's, it's not updated and revised on the, on the left.
It does, it does give you, and that mansard is, in fact, a setback.
Yeah.
It's not a significant setback, but it is a setback.
Yeah. Well, it's a, a big, deep cornice, and then a sloped roof, so it does create a setback in itself.
You have a very significant setback on the final...
Maybe the section, if we're going to look at anything the section would show, yeah. Yeah.
So, I think that it does, it, in my view at least, it accords with the zoning requirements. So, I, I think that what we should do is, why don't you turn this off, and then we're going to maybe discuss where we're going to go. Do you have anything else to, do we have questions on this?
We do have a couple of questions. One or two. Warren, can you just answer some dimensional questions?
Mm-hmm.
On what is the setback of the fourth story from the third story?
16 feet.
The 16 feet?
It jogs a little bit.
Yeah, I see the jog, but roughly 16 feet?
Yeah, the main facade of it is 16 feet, and then...
And the third story from the second story?
The third story from the second story?
That's the mansard.
On the mansard. I'm just going to point out...
Yeah?
There's a, a two-foot cornice extension with a bracket underneath it, and then at the base of that, a sloped wall, which is the typical mansard with dormers in it. So, the two-foot projection is, if you want to call that a setback. I think it really is a deep shadow line that, that creates the appearance of a transition.
But the mansard goes this way so that there is, how, what is that slope? Is it two feet overall?
Oh, of, of the overall height, a vertical offset of the mansard?
Yeah.
You know, I, it's probably around two feet, but I would have to draw it to know. I don't know exactly.
So, we can confirm that later on?
Yeah, yeah.
On the ground level, up towards the tracks, you're showing landscaping here. Are you intending that the commercial space in this area be accessed from the track side or from Central Avenue side? That was just unclear.
Either way would be, work for me, we could do Central Ave. We're trying to get some landscaping in there and figure out...
That's fine. I know it's all conceptual. I just wanted to, okay.
Yeah.
And on the rest, on the curved area here, I know at one point, very early on, you were talking about the ability to put tables and chairs out here. Is there enough room in this area to do that with the changes?
Yeah.
Okay.
That hasn't changed, that, that dimension.
And it would be more than one table?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we had, you recall renderings of those. I think about maybe six, you know, four-seaters or six-seaters fit in there.
All right.
It's about 14 feet with...
Okay.
And then the retaining wall.
And would, in this conceptual plan, would that retain any of the existing walls? The existing stone wall?
We have not really, I haven't really looked at that yet. We, we, if feasible, we would try to do that.
Okay.
Certainly, there's no reason not to do that.
If you can.
And we can blend with it.
If you can.
Yeah, I mean, we're trying to do field stone, so it, it could work, but we haven't gotten to that point yet.
Okay. Just wondering again. All right, I'll probably have some more later, but that answers the immediate questions. Thank you.
All right. Now, the, we've had that presentation, and we, this is a special permit application, and Mr. Lynch is not here. And the law says that he can only miss one meeting, and I believe that he's missed a meeting, so that he can't miss this meeting and continue or, and have a vote. So, my feeling is, yes...
And Mr. Kelly is not eligible to vote only this once.
Mr. Kelly has missed more than one meeting.
Through no fault of his own.
Through no fault of his own. Exactly right. But I, I mean, that puts us in something of a box, and my feeling is that we've had this presentation, and I think that we should continue to discuss it. But I don't think that this evening should be a part of our formal public hearing. I think it should be a discussion, and people who want their, want to discuss it should be entitled and will be entitled to do so. And then when Mr. Lynch, Mr. Lynch has a medical situation and would be here if he could. He is watching on TV, but I don't think that... We can, he can be here in 30 minutes. Is this right?
When you need him to vote, he can be here within 30 minutes.
I think that, why don't you bring him here, and until then, until then, we will discuss the matter, but it will not be part of the public hearing until Mr. Lynch gets here.
I don't think we can do that.
Why is that?
And I don't want to make any trouble for, for Bernie. I understand the situation, but it's been advertised as a public hearing. What we could do with the patience of all the people is we could take on one of the other issues for 30 minutes that we have in front of us that's not a scheduled time, and then come back to this.
I agree with that.
Okay.
I think that's what should be done, to preserve integrity and seriousness, for us to step back, have something else come up when he's here, continue with it. That's interesting. I hope that's...
Yeah, I don't want to inconvenience anybody, but I think that's the cleanest method. Okay.
Okay. Someone has to call Mr. Lynch.
Alex.
We could take that 683...
He's got some...
Yes.
We could take that either 704 or 683, 685, because they're not timed.
Okay. Now, we're going to have the town planners report.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
So, this presentation is not on the public record?
No, no, that's not...
So, they're going to have to do it again?
They're going to do it again.
Yes. We probably should have brought that up before we got started with the presentation.
I forgot.
That's all right. You forget. These 683...
Yeah. Can we go, can we do 683, 685?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, let's, 683, 685, Rush Hill Road.
Assistant living?
I call them the 407.
Okay. What about the town planners' report, Mr. Clark?
What about assistant living?
What?
Assistant living. And I can add a...
All right. They're not here either. Jason's not here.
All right, so you get 20 minutes for your town planners' report, and I'll do 10 minutes on the master plan, and we'll be set. All right.
In your packet, you'll see that there is a ZBA hearing notice. That ZBA hearing notice is there because of the, is a scenic wall issue at 700 Canton Ave. 700 Canton Ave was a lot, it was an ANR lot that was allowed to be created by the planning board. It had to go through the zoning board of appeals because that's a Merjwood, Merjwood Drive lot.
Right.
And the board, this board met after the zoning board of appeals made its decision to allow it, but they said at that time that the driveway should be on Canton Avenue. This board took the vote and is of the feeling that the opening should be on Merjwood for that particular house. So, the decision from the planning, from the zoning board of appeals is attached to the hearing for the zoning board of appeals meeting?
Yeah.
And how would you like to handle that? I would suggest that you, you or somebody from this board go to that meeting.
So, they're asked, the applicant is asking to change from Canton Avenue to Merjwood?
Yep.
We've suggested that they change to Merjwood.
Yep.
So, the ZBA just wants somebody from the planning board to go down and say that? Is that what you're...
I think the homeowner wants somebody from the planning board to go with them to the zoning board of appeals, as they ask that the driveway be changed from Canton Ave to Merjwood.
But we have a lovely letter.
I know we do, but...
Signed by yours truly.
Personal appearance is always better than your letter.
That's...
Well, obviously, since you wrote the letter, if...
Thanks, Alex. Wednesday, July 9th.
It can't be Wednesday, July 9th.
Yeah, it can't be Wednesday, July 9th. When is it?
The 9th is Monday.
All right. So, that the ad is wrong, and they're going to have to...
And therefore, they'll have to go.
You're going to have to get that corrected, and, and come back to us when you have a proper notice.
Ooh. Cool.
Okay.
But, Bill, I will appear once, assuming my schedule allows, I'll appear once we know what the date is.
Okay.
All right.
Paperwork for...
Paperwork for the, for Hillside Street, three-three-three Hillside Street, is before you. That's the eighty-one Y from Mr. Bosworth.
Yep.
The application is before you. I've given copies of it to the, to the Board of Health, the Conservation Commission, the DPW, uh, town engineer, and that's it.
What's our timeline on that?
I have to give one to the Historic Commission, and Mr. O'Donnell already left, so, okay? Um, I'll get one to him.
What's our timeline on three-thirty-three?
Clock just started on, I believe it was the nineteenth.
Okay, that's a different one.
And when are we taking a, a public hearing?
July twelfth.
Okay.
That's your first...
Okay.
Time, and, and, uh...
At what time?
Seven-thirty. It's noticed in the paper for a hearing at seven-thirty on July twelfth.
Okay.
I'm dealing with the paperwork for the six eighty-three, six eighty-five. Again, the proposal went to, uh, the Board of Health, the Conservation Commission, the DPW, the engineering...
They're here now? They're here now. So maybe we can, uh, we can, uh, just segue right into that after you finish your...
No, let me finish this thing, and then we'll go to that. I did send a notice for six eighty-three, six eighty-five to the abutters. I have two other scenic road hearings coming up. One is on Hillside, one is at the corner of Bradley and Brush Hill. So I am going to take and try to squeeze these things into your agendas, and I'm not sure how, but...
But not tonight, one day or other?
No, not tonight. They take two weeks of notice, but, um, that's why there was one at six-thirty-five before the six forty-five.
Okay, we'd like to give them about fifteen minutes of hearing. So let's do six eighty-three, six eighty-five Brush Hill Road right now.
All right, this is for a preliminary subdivision.
Right.
Um, this board has actually seen this a couple of times now. This will be the third presentation for a preliminary subdivision, uh, but this is a different developer, and they will introduce...
But a similar engineer.
Can I get rid of them?
And I guess what we're, uh, what we're wanting to find out tonight is whether or not we should have a hearing or whether or not we should, we should give this a preliminary blessing and go into a definitive.
Yes.
And the question of a hearing will be whether or not, uh, there is neighborhood pleasure or displeasure. All right.
All right. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Ned Corcoran, attorney, Quincy representing Jerry Rankin, who is the proponent, um, the new proponent for the subdivision at six eighty-three, six eighty-five Brush Hill Road. We're here with, um, Jim DeSalle from DeSalle Burke Associates, who is the, who are the engineers on the project, and they were the engineers for the prior proponent. I, I know that there are at least a couple of neighbors here in response to the notice that the town received. We've spoken briefly with them, and obviously, the report of them to be heard as they choose on the project.
And my name is Jerry Rankin, and I propose as a developer, um, on six eighty-three, six eighty-five Brush Hill. And I first looked at the project probably about, literally like, I mean, four or five weeks ago. And we were, I was informed that there was a previous developer, probably what they said, had all that basic work done, and I was informed of a couple of issues that prevailed. And just to make them, what, simplify them, um, there was one issue with the trees, there was an issue with the access at, at, at the rear of the property to, uh, Mr. The Darties and Mr. DeVacar, and also Bob, uh, the, the owner of the property at the front of, um, Keith, there was an issue of access. I have spoken with, um, all the residents, well, I spoke with fifteen, twenty of the residents about two weeks ago. I met with them on a Saturday morning and listened to all their issues. And I think it was a pretty, I think it was a productive meeting, they can say that themselves. And...
I don't want Jeff to think.
Sorry?
You turn it over to Jeff.
Yeah, and so, um, we've addressed, I think we've addressed most of the issues, and I think Jim DeSalle will probably, any questions? Jim DeSalle should be able to explain the, the project and the changes that have been made.
I am Jim DeSalle from DeSalle Burke Associates, and the biggest change to this set of plans that's before you is the name. Okay?
This is similar to that final plan we had.
Nothing has changed on that plan.
And let me just explain that this is a subdivision that we were all set to approve.
Correct.
When the previous developer got called fee or something.
And withdrew his application. I think he's the most neutral.
And withdrew, and withdrew the application, leaving us, uh, with nothing to vote on. So we're pleased to, um, see it again.
And typically, the, the subdivision, uh, the, the only, even actually, the, the plan that, uh, was submitted before you, the one change that I believe that the board, um, had voted on, that we haven't modified on this plan yet, um, you know, the, the issue with the access, um, that, to this first lot that was cut off back about ten years ago, uh, my client has no issues whatsoever dealing with that concept that we went through with the one-twelfth and, uh, whatever the issue was on, on that. And the other issue here with the neighbors in the back with this right of way.
Yeah.
He doesn't have a problem getting rid of that right away.
Okay.
Because it, again, doesn't really serve the new lots that are created on, on this subdivision. The only thing that's on here that we thought was being taken off was the sidewalk. And I believe that that's...
I think we took the sidewalk off.
Okay, that has not been reflected on the plans that are before you.
Or, or did we? Did we?
Did we take half of it off?
We took half of it off.
Yeah, we left it on one side, but not on both sides, I think.
Well, what we had was originally, we came up and then cut across.
Right.
Right.
Isn't that the way?
I think that, I think that's how it still was.
We didn't have them going all the way up both sides, we cut across.
I know that was something that was...
All right, let's hear from the neighbors, uh, to see whether or not, uh, they're in general, in general happy.
Actually, can I, one, one other, one minor change I just want to bring up for you. The, the one change that was requested by the applicant is we want to put in Cape Cod burn, which is similar to the Fletcher Steel subdivision, instead of the sloped ran.
A Cape Cod burn, uh... A cake with asphalt?
Yes.
Well, okay, we'll discuss that. Mr. Kern, what do you think?
Well, Mr. Whiteside, um, to Kern, the president of the Brush Hill area, the association and the abutter to the project, um, we did meet with, um, Jerry a couple weeks ago, and we had what I thought was a good, good conversation. I think in terms of where to go this evening, we would like an opportunity to review a final plan with him before we cast our, our support one way or the other, and would request that you give us the time to do that. I know that there's few changes, so I...
As you know, if he files a definitive plan, we have a full public hearing, and changes can be made. It's simply whether in concept, this is a concept that you feel should be, can be pursued.
Oh, yeah, I think we're, 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 we're fairly comfortable with the direction's going, and there's minimal things to discuss, I think, at the, from this point right forward.
I think we can go right ahead to a definitive plan. I think you should discuss with him what you want on the definitive plan, so we don't have to hash it out here in public hearing.
Sure, yeah.
But, uh, it's going to take them a little bit to do the definitive plan, or it probably won't do them, take a whole lot, but, uh, do talk to Mr. Kern about issues.
Can I, can I just say one thing? Um, there's a, there's a fifty-foot buffer in front of the property, do not disturb, which I, I don't want to disturb. However, I, one of the neighbors addressed, had made a phone call to me and addressed an issue of cleaning it up and landscaping, and so I just want to, you know, clarify that. I'm not, I don't want to, to work in the buffer, but I would like to clean it up. Obviously, when you approach a property or you approach any property, your first impression is very important. So it was one issue that, one of, one of the neighbors had suggested just cleaning that property, cleaning it up at the front, so...
So we need to modify any restrictions on working that?
I'm not looking to cut any trees down or anything like that, but it just to, to do some landscaping in the front, just to clean it up, if that's good with the association.
I view that as a detail, and I think that details are resolvable, and, and I don't see that the board has any interest in a, a bunch of, uh, dead shrubbery.
I think we can just double-check the language and how it's written to make sure it gives that flexibility.
I think the issue is one of, um, it, it was referred to as a no-touch zone. It's not a no-touch zone.
It's a...
No pot.
It's a vegetated area that needs, it needs some T F, yeah, care.
Right, I, I think that we agree that, uh, it needs, the best forest are the ones that are carefully cared for.
Is it in the time layout?
No, no. We need to remain in the, in no-touch language.
Okay.
Okay, uh, so I think that we will proceed to, we will entertain a motion to approve the concept.
And move to a definitive.
And move, ask that you, you can submit a definitive plan.
You're going to hear the rest of the public?
Oh, the rest of the public, yes, sir.
And I just want to quickly make... Henry Carr, six-seven-six Brush Hill Road. I live directly across the street, and, and I know we've already told them this before, and they, I think they're pretty much cooperative, but I just want to reemphasize, we're very concerned with the water and, and not cutting through as little as possible the, the landscape and trying to preserve as much of the stone wall. And I know we've discussed that before, I'd just like to reemphasize that.
Okay.
That's just all I have to say.
Who else wants to be heard quickly? Because we're going to have a, a full public hearing on this.
Sometimes I think silence is golden.
All right. I think that, I think that waiting for the full public hearing, it, it's always, you know, if you testify twice, it, it removes the suspense.
That's new one.
So why don't we approve this plan in concept and, uh, suggest the developer proceed to a definitive plan?
So moved.
A discussion? All in favor?
Second, second.
I think we had a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, so you've got your marching orders.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the board.
Okay, now we're going to have a public hearing on one-thirty-one Elliot Street, the Hendry's project. And we're going to hear, we've had a preliminary presentation from the developer, which was not part of the public hearing, and we're going to have the same presentation, although it's going to be a refined presentation. The same but refined. And where is the applicant?
Across the hall, in the kitchen.
Would you bring him, Ed, would you go get the applicant?
Yep.
There we go.
Okay, set up your thing, set up your camera. What we've said, uh, is that you're going to make this, we're going to start the public hearing a benicio, from the beginning. Uh, you're going to make the same presentation, uh, except you're going to refine it. Right, say.
Maybe Warren, if you could throw in some of those dimensional questions I asked, I won't have to ask them again for the record.
I saw this.
No, what?
You have to do it, unfortunately.
You have to be here.
Totally understand, yeah. Although I understand that you can now, um, call in to meetings, you can actually have teleconferences, that's being allowed, so we may want to explore what we need to do to do that.
All right, um, why don't you introduce yourselves?
Yes.
And, uh, and proceed.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is William McDermott. I'm the, uh, attorney for the project. To my left is Warren Daniel, who is the project architect. Uh, Mr. Carmody will be returning to the room in a minute with the person who is running the slideshow. At the last meeting that we attended last month, there were three important issues which were discussed and which would be rediscussed tonight. The first one, uh, was the reconfirmation, uh, that the zoning height requirement can be met, uh, with some architectural planning, because we're only about two inches away from getting this project online, so we will be very careful and give you exact measurements when we finalize everything, but it is our intention to have a zoning-compliant project. We do not want to go to the Board of Appeal. Uh, the second issue, um, which I learned tonight, was resolved, uh, and that had to be, uh, with the basement area. Can it, does it meet the requirement? Again, it may have that two-inch issue, but we'll, we'll address that. And can, and the other issue was, uh, was retail and appropriate use for that section, and I understand it has been resolved, um, by the building inspector and, and by the, the board, so...
Who sent me an email, which I'm going to send to Mr. Clark. I, I apologize for not doing that, and he will distribute it.
Fine. And the last issue which we, uh, which we addressed more fully tonight, uh, was Warren Daniel responding to the requirements of the setbacks of the third and fourth floors, and I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Daniel to do that.
Good, thank you. Um, I'm going to start up here, get away from the microphone.
Take your microphone with you.
Here we go. Quickly showing the plans, uh, which I think kind of tell a lot of the story, uh, the floor plans. This is the ground floor plan, and what we're showing is the two areas of, uh, business development. And a, a real change we made is to take this one-story piece of the, sort of built out onto the sidewalk, um, on Central Ave, out completely, just move that back so we get roughly a thirty-four-foot setback to that line from the curb, a large area, and we'll get into the landscaping, um, possibilities with that. And then on the first floor above, it shows a combination of, in blue, residential three units, and in the yellow-orange here, uh, the commercial space. Moving up to the fourth floor, because that's changed, the second and third remain the same from previously, but the step back, uh, horizontal step back here of the fourth floor allows, it's a sixteen-foot, uh, setback, and it's jogged so that the unit is not, uh, there's a single unit there, is not a monolith there, but has, has a articulated, uh, space here in the corner. We want a setback from this corner as well. So that was the configuration that we came up with. It's one unit where there was originally two. Uh, so we achieved about a sixteen-foot setback, um, there, and, um, so there's really kind of two setbacks, I think, that we've achieved, uh, from the previous scheme. The key one is that the ground, and I think they're both key, but the, uh, the one that involves the public amenity part of it is the, um, at the ground floor, the landscaping area, and we'll get into the site in a second. And the second is a, a setback of the roof line, um, on Central Ave to diminish the scale of Central Ave and create that three-story wrap from the, uh, ring, which was always three-story, to the facade, uh, along Central Ave. So it's a little cumbersome, but... Do the slideshow?
Do the slideshow, yeah.
Got to have a reach.
He does.
It doesn't seem to be.
Oh, there it is.
Don't like that.
There it is. Oh, that's on him.
Okay. No, what do you want?
I was just going to go bottom side the way we did before.
What's bottom up?
Yeah. Yeah, these are, these are the ones that we just looked at. We can go back to them if you want, but.
Off the bottom, that's a top.
Right. The plan, I think it's one down from that.
Play the other.
The plan? There it is, the site plan. So this is the the corner, obviously, of Elliot Street and Central Ave, showing up to the tracks at the very top of the slide. And the green, obviously, is landscaped areas. It's not highly detailed. The street trees are existing, pear and honey locust trees that have been there a while. And they are, of course, in public land. The dotted dashed line shows the property line demarcation. So everything towards Central Ave from there is public land. And that varies a little bit, but it's roughly about eight feet. And then, as you see, there's a 12-foot setback of landscaping, and then 14-foot setback of the building. So we have a, adding those up, I think it's 34, setback from the curb to the three-story setback on the building to create basically a, I think of it as a 30 by 50-foot landscaped area, which would be a public park amenity with a large shade tree, hardwood shade tree, species to be determined. We'll work with the landscape architect on that. And a raised planter with benches surrounding it. The raised, the planter would be roughly three feet raised with shrubs, bushes, flowering bushes below it as an understory. Yeah.
Warren, what's the maroon? Is that grass or some impervious surface or what is it?
The maroon.
The maroon canopy.
The brick.
Oh, brick.
Brick sidewalk, yeah. 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 And the rest of it, the green, obviously, is a combination of planting that we've had previously and some new configurations of plant beds and areas. So that would be, that area that we're talking about would be redesigned to accommodate the much larger space that we have now and to create pathways that, you know, that makes sense for the possibility of business entrances. That's something that obviously needs to be defined at some point before, before too long, as to how many different entrance locations we want to have there. But what we're doing is basically floating a nice piece of greenery in a in a brick sidewalk, brick plaza. Down at the bottom of of the page, there's a courtyard which goes in towards Elliot Street as it runs up the hill and goes to the full depth of that three-story wing, which is about 64 feet, not including the the tower. So that's an additional area that that could be used for dining, informal dining, sitting, reading the paper, et cetera. So combine those, I think that wrapping the corner has a a pretty good cumulative effect of creating a a public space and public amenity, which is the intent of the zoning from what we read and have heard. And then, you want to go to the section? Yeah, that's good. Looking through the same drawing, really, but cutting through the three-story wing, we have two levels of business, ground floor and first floor, then two residential blue levels above them, showing the, again, the depth of of that setback and that that public space that we have developed. And then in the background, you see in elevation, the the three-story facade going back, wrapping along Elliot's, rather, Central Ave. So we have essentially two, two levels of setback in in that whole facade from Elliot Street, three-story wing to Central Ave. The mansard roof with a prominent projecting cornice at the base of it is a big setback and a shadow line, a sloped roof. And then the setting back of the three-story from the four-story setback, and the final drawing we'll show you is a a perspective of what roughly that would look like. Let me through a memory lane here. Yeah, that's it. And again, this is not a finished drawing, because really what what we did was was just copy the four-story version of it and slide it down to the three-story and show a little bit of, from that vantage point, what our calculations show, you would be able to see of the four-story element behind it. The landscaping that we just talked about is not reflected here at all. In fact, the one-story projection on Elliot, on Central Ave is shown. So that's not reflective completely of this idea that we're we're showing. But what this does show is the is the massing on Central Ave to step the building down. Everywhere where it meets the street is is three-story now with a basement. And the four-story element is primarily setback from Elliot Street, about 60 feet, and then along the tracks, setback about 10 feet. So that's essentially our story. Yeah.
One other question, Warren. I saw a plan that showed the existing height of the existing building that's there.
Yeah.
I don't see it.
I think we we have that in one. It's.
Because it looks like it was the same height as.
Yeah, the, well, the new height, which brings up the height question, the height of the three-story element is 40 feet off grade. When you say height, it can mean a few different things. Height, the height of the building is is relative to the average grade along the building, which is different from what we're saying, the height, the actual height off the sidewalk, if that is.
Bernie, the height on Central Ave, over by the tracks, the new design is 40 feet, and then a setback. So instead of 51, it's now 40.
Yeah.
Another site section you would like?
No, it showed you, you proposed, and then it looked like the existing building was in the picture, too.
This this drawing here shows.
I think, yeah, that one, which we didn't show, because it was kind of redundant with this one. We, I think we have it scanned here. There.
Yeah, there is land existing.
Yeah. So that that is showing the, both the plan location and the height of the existing front of the building, the Hendry's factory. And it's got that kind of front radiator, as you know. I think of it as a radiator.
Is that in time?
Yeah. And it's right on the property line. So we're stepping back, obviously, in a number of ways from that and breaking that facade, which is pretty hideous. Yeah, this is just a earlier, slightly rougher sketch of of the other one that we were just looking at. That one, yeah. We're showing you the outtakes, too.
Warren, on this, are you showing the principal floor at 11 feet?
Yes.
Okay.
This one?
Or no, or the ground floor?
The ground floor, you probably got to bring down to 10. That, number one, probably should be your 11-foot story, just because of the basement issue. If this is 10 feet, that is going to make it easier to qualify as a basement.
Okay.
I mean, I think that that's what we, that's where we got the fact that you're within inches rather than a foot.
Right. If you add, if your, if your basement floor is 11 feet, you're more than a few inches off.
The floor number one would be the 11.
Okay. I was not here at the last meeting. I knew there was some discussion about that. Yeah, we can do that.
Great, excellent.
And your, what is the FAR that you are proposing?
The FAR, we calculate to be 1.64, which is about a 9% bonus over the 1.5 FAR.
And do you have some questions on?
Let's see, I asked about the dimensions of the setback from the fourth story to the third.
Right.
You said 16.
16 feet. Yeah, you can see it in this.
Okay. And then the three-story to the second was the other one. And that's not on the.
Right. And and again, that's a, that's a cornice and a sloped roof of the mansard. So the cornice projects two feet and has brackets below it. And and the roof leans back about two feet from base to, oops, to the top.
So it's probably about four feet overall.
Probably four feet.
Right. Well, it projects out and then and then back, you know.
But I mean, from the front of the cornice to the.
Right, from the front of the cornice to the.
Tip of the mansard.
Right, to the, drip out to the roof, if you want.
And then I think my last question was making sure that part along the bottom of Elliot and turning the corner had sufficient room for outdoor seating, as we discussed in an earlier meeting.
Yes. And I I should have the dimension on here. I'm looking on this one. Maybe look at the site plan. But that is about 14 feet. And then we have a retaining wall with planter and, planter, and there it is. Yeah. So, yeah, you could put a number of tables in there.
Okay. And then the possibility of.
Yeah, a range of benches, different kinds of seating, obviously. We haven't looked at anything being fixed construction in there, but just movable furniture.
This is, this area here.
Right.
Once again, it's on a slope, but it's.
Right, it's a partially sunken courtyard.
Potentially, I mean, the public will get.
A dining and public use area, sure.
How do you access that area?
Two ways, really, from the entry at the corner and also at, it isn't fully drawn in, but the stair going down from Elliot Street. You see the the bottom three, three or four risers on that stair, but that's a a full stair going down from Elliot Street. So you get from both ends.
And there is a entrance here?
Right. And actually, it's a few steps down to grade there, and then it connects in. It probably should be colored where that little arrow is to show that the material, outside material carries through there.
Okay, so the brick continues under the.
The brick continues through and probably should be shown in that, where that arrow is.
In front of that dotted line.
Right.
Towards the street should be brown or the red brick color.
Right.
Okay.
Right. The the building overhangs it at the corner, so it's, the face of it up above is, is, you know, what you see is white there now. But I, looking at it now, it should have been, to to explain this better, it probably should have been at the ground level.
It's continuous, right?
Yeah, right. And show doors there, too. That, obviously, the arrows indicate door locations.
Warren, your lighting, how are you going to address stanchions and?
Yeah, as.
Period lighting.
We have, you remember the lighting from before, we had a combination of pole lights and and building lights. And they they are RLM gooseneck lights to match or be very close to what exists there now as site lighting. A combination of low pole lighting, it's fairly low, it's about 12 feet high. But we we had that before. This area has not been designed for lighting. If we get approval in the basic concept of it, then we'll we'll look at that lighting, because I think that is important, too.
Too busy.
Yeah, that.
What about fencing?
We have contemplated really no fencing in this area.
I see the property line, but I don't see.
Right, that, the fence that we have, and we're not showing it in these drawings, but is along Elliot Street, and that hasn't changed.
Is he open, open metal fencing?
Right, right, open metal fencing and granite stanchions. So we could look at a few earlier renderings or drawings to look at that. But that really, yeah, that showed it. The one along Elliot Street.
And handrails coming down.
That way, yeah. So that fencing is what we've had along Elliot Street. And then it diminishes and and goes away as you get on onto Central Ave, because we really want it to be more welcoming and and public and.
It has to beckon people to please come in.
Yeah, yeah. So really, it is obviously kind of two ends of the building that have different characteristics, the residential and along Elliot Street and and the commercial at the corner and along Central.
On the third floor setback, you know, obviously, we're seeing this really for the first time tonight, so I have to think about that four feet. But I noticed that, well, I note that with the fourth, fourth floor being setback so much, you've got the opportunity to put a terrace in there for the people who own those units. I'm wondering, and obviously, we haven't talked about how this all works, I'm wondering if setting back the third floor more to add a terrace there would make those units more marketable. And I wonder if you've had the chance to explore that yet. I know you've been working on the concept.
Well, I I haven't. And I think primarily because I I really, and I think it shows it maybe best to go back to the section. I should probably have the, the, the earlier, that, that, that one, yeah. I think to break it up more with more setbacks and sort of constant sawtooth setbacks is really, to me, not in the nature of buildings of this style, which has a historical flavor. And the reason is they, among the reasons, they really are composed with a a base, a body, and a top. In this case, the three-story element and the four-story element. The base is consistent with the brick facade and and denoting really commercial. And the clobbered above, and then the mansard roof. So those three elements are kind of classic. And to start breaking those and eroding it into more setbacks, I think, is just unattractive.
So you're privileging the tripartite scheme over that continual set of setbacks.
I I prefer it. And I think it also works better for the plans to not vary the plans in ways that aren't sort of integral to the way it's laid out. It's just. I realize it may be, and, you know, we talked about this, this isn't just me, but this this is a feeling I have.
Okay, fair enough.
Well, this is your architectural view.
Right, exactly.
I mean, you are architects. Have views. I mean, when you design a building, you like it to satisfy your own aesthetic senses.
Sure. And function.
Always helpful.
Does the board have questions?
Do we know the dimension from the average finished grade to the fourth story roof line?
It remains the same at at 45 feet. That's what it's been.
But the finished grade, once again, would would depend on the landscaping that we approved. But it can be, it can be, it's so close that.
Well, if you modify the average finished grade, you'd modify that heights.
Right. I mean, it can be, with this basement at 10 feet, it's a matter of inches, which can be, can, is a detail that can be, can be.
Solvable.
Resolve. Okay. Why don't you turn off, turn off the projector and turn on the light? Now, it seems to me that we have this plan, but they have indicated that we really need to know whether we're, based on this concept that they presented, whether or not we're willing to give that 9% bonus and allow a 1.64 FAR. And I guess the question is, why not just do something that is 1.5 and not worry about the bonus? the bonus? Are there reasons why the bonus is important to you?
Yes, certainly.
Why don't you discuss them?
Well, I, I would defer really to the owner, because I, I take my lead from his ideas and desires, and I think it, it, obviously, the fundamental reason is to, to create a marketable project.
First of all, the zoning allows it with, we're one unit below the base unit count that was established with the zoning, and secondly, we do need a unit count that we could be successful with this project, and there is a, the construction, the level of construction on it is extensive, especially with the removal of the building and possible cleanup there, we're not sure, we haven't done a Phase 2, 21E yet, we'll do that when we do, if we do get a permit, with our testing, we'd be doing that, so we need to have a count that we can be successful with. I, I think the understanding since 2003, when we first started this with the Urban Land Institute, that the unit count would be somewhere between 35 or six or anything up to 47, I think at that time was the maximum, if that's what the zoning allows, so. The FAR bonus is needed to attain even a base count, and this is what we need to, to finance and be successful with this development.
How many units would you lose at an FAR of 1.5, have you calculated that out?
Would probably lose four.
Four units?
Yeah. And then we'd still have the affordable of three, which would bring it down to 21E to market rate.
28 market rate.
Yeah, instead of 32, so we'd be losing four market rates.
So, I think, anything else?
No, that's.
I think that tonight we should determine whether or not we're willing to give them a bonus, so that they, because if we, if they don't have a bonus, all this planning is, isn't productive, because they would have to redesign the project once they knew they weren't going to get the bonus. So if they're not going to get a bonus, the 9% bonus, I, I would think that we'd probably say 10%, but maybe we could say nine, it would, it would, is it 9%?
You know, I.
I think it's a little under nine, actually.
Yeah, actually, I, I figured the FAR, but I didn't figure the, the bonus.
We can always have a.
Present bonus.
Okay, so you would want a 1.64 FAR.
Yeah.
Which is approximately a 10%.
Right.
Increase over what's, whatever the zoning. Okay, I think that before the night is over, this board needs to decide that, and I think that the board should decide that by vote, and then they should indicate whether or not this concept is a concept we feel is worth pursuing.
I'm assuming we can also suggest modifications to the concept.
If, if, yeah, we could, we could do that, but we should discuss the concept without specifically approving it, because we don't have enough to, we would say, develop the concept so that we'll have something we can possibly approve, and if we have conditions, fine. I think that the, obviously, the site planning is, the landscaping is a matter that is totally, it, it is not resolved, and I don't think we'd resolve it tonight, and I don't think we, we even need vote or even need express the concept, other than the fact we'd like the idea of the open space that they're providing. Okay.
You're saying, well, first of all, I have to mention that I have a conflict with this project from time to time, I inspect properties for the Conley's, and I've been in touch with the, you know, the people at the State House, the Town Council, and I've got a document out there saying that I do from time to time work for the Conley's, but the solemn oath of office that I took with the planning board is, that's, that's going to be the factor that, that I use to decide how I feel about whatever the final product is going to be, and it's not the case of getting future inspectional work from the Conley's.
I believe you'd filed, you had stated before that you'd filed disclosure with the Town Council, yes.
Okay, it's always good to, good to mention it again. So, what we're going to.
Just one other thing, I've been very quiet during this whole process, because I didn't want to potentially have any influence on what the final project would, would look like. Now, now we have this, this concept, but I see a picture that doesn't reflect what, what it's really going to be.
Right, it's, it's, we, we're not there, it's a question of whether or not they should pursue the concept and, and come up with something more, more detailed.
Well, what's, what, can you define the concept?
The concept is a setback of the fourth story, removal of the, the, the single story in order to make a public gathering space.
To push on.
And do the mansard. Your mansard would be the beginning of your step back, and then the terrace area above would be the, would be the, the fourth floor, fourth story setback, and the building would be with those, with the step backs, would be significantly, would, would be much the same as currently, but significantly different.
Well, I could vote for the concept, but all along this whole process, we've been changing things and they're going to come back and coming back, so, you know, we're right back where we started.
Well, I don't think so. I think that the question is whether or not they're entitled to a bonus, because if they're, if we say that we will give you a bonus, if you come in with a plan that we approve of, and that we suggest you pursue the concept you presented tonight with elevations and the details that you need in order to see whether you really like it or not.
So, shouldn't we be kind of putting some of this stuff in stone, so that.
The bonus, the bonus, we're going, we can't set the concept in stone, because we don't have, we're not architects. We're dependent on Warren to, to come up with elevations and plans and, but they want to know, they've shown us a concept tonight, and they say, shall we pursue this or shall we not? And by the end of the night, I would hope that we could say, yes, pursue it, come back with some detailed plans, so that we can tell you whether or not it, it meets our, our approval.
But I think we should also, if we want to make any modifications to the plans as they've been presented tonight, or to the concept others they've presented tonight, I think we should make sure to let them know that as well.
Right, but I, and I think that they're entitled to know whether or not, if they come up with satisfactory plans, they can get a bonus, because right now, they have no idea, and if they can't get a bonus, then they might as well, I, I mean, there's no point for them to go and develop these plans, because these plans are dependent on their getting a bonus.
On, on moving forward on the concept, what, what situation, some commentary was made last time, but it seems to me that they're very much accommodating, and I, I'm just speaking aloud to.
Right.
Understand it myself, if, if you say, go ahead on the concept, and they come back with a finished design that's very similar to this concept.
Yeah.
I would assume that they've moved in the direction that the board has suspected they would, or intended that they would.
Hope they would.
Hope they would, so, it's, it's, it's a more or less just saying, if the concept is approved, then just put finer details to it.
Well, I, I mean, they've got to, they've got to flesh out the concept so that we have something specific to look at. I mean, it, you remember, we did a site visit at that assisted living facility, which is very helpful, but we need more than we've got now to, to say we're in love with it.
They've addressed some of the big issues.
But they, they certainly have, have made some significant changes, and I think that we should, by the end of the evening, as I say, say whether or not we'd like the concept, and we should determine whether or not they're entitled to a bonus.
One of the concepts, how do we feel about the mansard roof?
I love it. How do you feel about it?
I want to hear everyone else, I, I don't want to try to influence anyone, I will vote at the very end.
All right, well, let's, let's, we're going to, we're going to hear, we're going to hear from the public. What I'm trying to define is the areas that we want to hear from people about.
Right.
We, we want testimony about the concept, we want, you know, thoughts about the bonus.
Right.
And.
I think it's a good time to move to that.
Okay, let's do it. And, and Warren, why don't you stay there?
Or maybe the others can move.
And maybe the others can, can, or maybe Steve, you stay there, and you guys in the middle. Okay, who wants to be heard?
I think we have an applicant.
Yes.
Thank you very much, my name is Ellen DeNoyer, I live on Cavan Street, I'm a town meeting member and also a board member of the Columbine Cliff Neighborhood Association. I appreciate this opportunity to speak. I would like to present to the board a petition, which has been signed by 165 neighbors and interested town residents, and I will summarize it here, but we will submit it. We support the redevelopment of the property in an appropriately scaled and well-designed manner. We understand the planning board has previously stated that the, until tonight, current proposed development does not meet the zoning, therefore, the proposal must be modified, and we have itemized what we consider to be the critical modifications. And we strongly urge the planning board to uphold the zoning requirements of the property, and specifically to require that at a minimum, the following critical elements of the zoning be incorporated in any proposed development in order to be awarded a special permit by the board. These are stepping back the facade along Central Avenue, and I will discuss that in more detail in a minute, stepping back the facade along Elliott Street, which we also feel strongly about, provide a significant public plaza of minimum 3,000 square feet at the corner of Elliott Street and Central Avenue, limit the FAR to 1.5, not provide the bonus, provide commercial space on the ground floor along Central Avenue, and particularly retail space, fronting on the plaza, and provide a construction management plan which incorporates review and comment by the planning board and the public. And if these elements are incorporated into the development, then we, I understand that the proponent is not interested in variances, but we would support variances selectively for certain elements such as building height or lot coverage, if it supported a better building. So as I said, we have 165 signatures, which I will submit. I'd like to specifically address the setback of the facade, and I would like to suggest that the applicant has made significant improvement. I certainly applaud the idea of the setback at the upper, upper story. However, I do not believe that a two-foot projection is considered a setback, I would call it a projection, and if that is two feet and you have a person standing on it, that's a very trim person, and if that is two feet, I suggest that the slope back on the mansard is not two feet, certainly not.
Can I, can I just?
Certainly not the way they're drawn, okay.
No, I'll, I'll explain that, because it is tricky, the, that little line there shows the bay, which is not in section, but in elevation, and that comes out further, so that, that's where that balcony is.
Okay, well, it's not, it's, I.
It's four feet there.
Well, I, I would like to suggest that the board truly enforce the zoning as it was written, because I think that an awful lot of care went into the writing of the zoning, and specifically, the number of stories of the building, I think this is very confusing for laypeople, clearly, somebody standing on the sidewalk is going to feel that they are standing next to a four-story wall, regardless of what you call it, and that the total height of the building is going to be perceived as a five-story building or a five-story wall, where it is a continuous wall. So I would like to suggest that where the zoning calls for setbacks of the third and fourth stories above the second story, this does not comply, and I would encourage the board to require significant setback, similar to what is on the upper floor, to make this comply, because I believe it does not currently comply. The language of the zoning calls for setback above the second floor, and I do not believe that that means above a basement plus two floors plus a projection, and then you start to set the building back. I do not believe it complies. Also, the zoning calls for no more than 25 feet of uninterrupted vertical plane. I think that what to the layperson standing on the sidewalk is going to be a three-story wall, is clearly more than 25 feet uninterrupted vertical plane. So again, I don't feel that this complies. Again, I applaud the effort to begin the process of complying by providing this upper story setback, but the building does not comply. And then another piece of language from the zoning is that the scale should be appropriate to the nearby residential area. The nearby residential area has two-story houses or one and a half-story houses, this is, by comparison, not at an appropriate scale. So I would like to suggest also that the plaza area is nowhere near large enough to be a significant public amenity. I would very much like to see furniture drawn in to this area, because I'm very skeptical about how it's going to fit. I also would like to see a section through here, because when you really understand the magnitude of the grade change from the adjacent area to this, you are going to be below grade when you stand here. The grade is going to be above your head, you are going to be essentially in a pit in that corner, and you're going to be there with a lot of dead leaves that are going to accumulate there and a little eddy. I just don't think that this is a significant public amenity yet, I think it's getting better, but I don't think four benches constitutes a significant public amenity, and I believe that the requirements to award the bonus require, among other things, a significant public amenity and preservation of a natural feature. I do not believe that the, and, that the board has yet enough evidence to award the bonus, based on what the criteria are for the bonus. So we have, we have offered to meet with the developer, we would very much like to contribute to the process, we would very much like to see a successful development. We are pleased to see the first step towards that, but I do not believe it is there yet. Thank you very much.
Who else wants to be heard?
Would like to be heard?
Come forward and you will be heard.
Good evening, I'm Cheryl Tagayas of Canton Avenue, I've been before you to speak on this project a number of times, as you know, I am an architect, with a number of years of. As you know, I am an architect with a number of years of experience addressing the kinds of issues that many people have spoken to over the course of the last 20 months that this project's been under review. Tonight, I'd like to focus on two aspects of the zoning that I think are the most critical, and they address some of the things which have been revised in the proposal that's presented tonight. So my comments are mostly on what we had seen to date, but I will also make some modifications based on what I saw tonight. The two issues are really the scale of the building and the significant public amenity. The zoning is written such that this planning board has discretion in evaluating whether the design meets those aspects of the zoning as they are written. So the scale really is impacted by a number of things that have been under discussion: the setback from the property line, the step back in the facade. In my mind, it also is impacted by the bonus FAR and by the design and the massing itself, so the choice to put, where to put the massing, where to put this on the site, and in particular the corner element, which is a corner tower. So the zoning that asks for step backs really to address the fact that this building is much bigger in scale than any of the buildings that are nearby. So these notions of step backs help give the perception of a change in scale and to build up in scale. I've got some diagrams to illustrate some of these ideas that I'll go through in a moment. The other thing is that the significant public amenity, I think, needs to be positioned on the site to take most advantage of the fact that this is a mixed-use and small commercial neighborhood, and that you have a lot of businesses there already, and that there's synergy that comes from the businesses relating to one another. So I would like to now step over to the diagrams. This is a diagram based on drawings that were on the town's website, but I could ascertain from your dimensions on the heights and position of the building on the site, based on a Google SketchUp kind of model, which also models the topography, and then based on eyeballing some of the adjacent buildings. So it's not 100% accurate, but it's close in scale. So we get a sense of the scale of the building, of the scale of the building relative to the other commercial buildings and also relative to some of the other residential buildings down Elliott Street. The step backs that are required or suggested in the zoning at this location and at this location help relate the building to a break in scale and to reduce the overall sheer volume of the building as it faces Central Ave. And then by moving the volume of building which is here, here, sliding it over as one of your massing studies had done, opens up the corner to be more inviting to the whole of the Central Ave intersection, and focuses on the public space instead of a private use on the upper floors. Another view of that same analysis... One can get a sense of the scale of the building again. This is looking central and Elliott and the trolley here. The scale of this building, these step backs can also wrap somewhat around this corner to break the scale as one looks at the building coming from Boston. And this view also shows the significant opportunity at the corner which is lost with the corner tower. Now, the proposal today does this step back and only this step back, and it keeps the tower and it eliminates this piece here. So those are relatively minor changes in the overall scale of the building. One needs to go from a boxier building to a more articulated building and then to a more detailed building, which would address some of the things like a mansard roof. So I really feel as if those aspects of the zoning, which address the scale of the building, are yet, are still insufficient, and I think I suggest that you go back to the drawing board again and address those. Thank you.
Who else wants to be heard?
My name's Adam Gilmore. I live at 22 Valley Road. I'm an architect as well. And I'm going to speak to slightly more overarching, you know, questions that, just to lend my support for. Regarding the building size and its massing, I think that the east elevation that the building is currently proposed is too tall and too close to Central Avenue. I agree with Mr. Taggias that the initial setback at the top is a move, a step in the right direction, but not adequate yet. I also think that the building as proposed is too tall and too close to the corner of Elliott and Central Ave, and I agree that it's the central tower that's the point of In general, I believe that the massing is out of scale with the adjacent buildings, is too centralized, i.e. too much of a monolithic form, and doesn't offer the best solution for a sensitive transition from the neighboring residential buildings to the proposed mixed-use development. I think that the design direction suggested by the alternative massing studies that were submitted to the board in March, particularly number two, would be far more appropriate for the site in its context and be closer to satisfying the spirit and goals of the zoning. Seems to me that all of the alternatives could be achieved without a loss of FAR. Parking, which has been somewhat pushed to the back, I think. I think that all of the parking should be entirely below the building. Rather than giving the valuable space to surface parking, which only uses six or seven vertical feet of the site, it may make more sense to use this valuable space for two-story building mass. Ironically, I think it may be a better way to offer a buffer or a transition from the residential scale. Increased underground parking obviously would add a cost, but it could be mitigated by inclusion in the public amenity and granting of the FAR bonus. The T station, with both the river and the T station to respond to, as currently proposed, the north elevation of the building at grade seems like somewhat of an afterthought. I think it would be a great opportunity lost for the building to turn its back so callously on the trolley platform. I assume that many of the residents of the building will use the station on a daily basis, and from a marketing standpoint, a more integrated relationship would be desired. One possibility would be wrapped, and I think that you maybe propose this, which is a good move, I think, possibly would be wrapped the commercial component of the building around so the storefront would face the tracks. In general, I have a, one comment I've been wanting to make or been thinking about for quite some time about the process, I have a couple of observations and possibly a question. It's my impression that there's some confusion regarding the commencement of the public process. The recommendations of the Central Avenue Revitalization Committee and the resultant presentation to Town Meeting were conceptual in nature and should not be misconstrued as approval for the public, within the public process. I may be mistaken, but the public process could not begin until the zoning was adopted or approved by Town Meeting. As a result, this difference of opinion, the process seems to have stalled. At the first, the first step of a multi-point process is obviously this massing and siding, and it seems to have been nearly a year, and tonight is the first time I've seen any change in the massing of the building, and only in a subtle, subtle way. So, you know, with such fundamental questions still out there, it's hard for me to see how the board can vote on granting of the additional FAR. You know, I would also agree that the public space, the court in the front of the building is being considered as the primary public space amenity. And I think as, again, the tower interrupts it, and it sort of renders it as two separate spaces, and that detracts from its use or functionality as a significant public space. The only other thing I would mention, as I made a note earlier during the presentation, is that in terms of historical context, I don't see this proposal aesthetically, with all due respect, as, within a historical context of the neighborhood. I mean, if, I think one way of looking at that would be to say that the historical concept, context is more mill building and mill housing and a transition between the two. And to me, this project should address that, and a successful outcome would be one that successfully bridged the old mill housing to a larger mass that had some relationship to the mill, mill historical concept. That's it. Thank you.
What about the mill itself?
Which mill?
The Mill and Baker complex.
No, I'm saying that that's the, that's part of the context at large of the...
The Mill and Baker's housing is, I mean, there are mill buildings in the area also.
Right. I'd like, I would, if you're going to use, if there's going to be a large building, I would suggest a more appropriate historical concept be a, possibly be, or just as an informer is the mill itself, the mill language itself. Or that means, if we're going to discuss the project in historical context, that's all. But I don't see this proposal as appropriate historical context. That's all. That's more of what I'm saying. Thank you.
Okay. Who else? Welcome.
Thank you.
Again.
Margaret Donovan, 41 Central Avenue. And I have to say that it is refreshing to find out that I'm not the only one here now dealing with this particular project. But by the same token, I don't think that we should rush through it either. I want to call attention to the fact that it was eight years in the process for 36 Central Avenue. This has been two years. I have questions about issues that were raised today, and I would like to point out that in terms of not rushing the process, I'm probably the closest to that building and could feel the impact of anything happening to that building prior to construction. So needless to say, I want to see it move along, but by the same token, I don't think we should just be building anything. Three issues were brought up in the course of the meeting today, and one was reconfiguration that the zoning height required can be met, can be met, since it's only two inches away. That's very vague. I mean, how is it going to be met? There was no description of meeting that two-inch requirement. The basement, two-inch issue can be fixed. I didn't hear that addressed either tonight. Retail and appropriate commercial enterprises, I guess the building inspector, I think you mentioned, was down there and came up with some suggestions. Didn't hear them. The picture...
Did I ask what you meant by that?
Well, this is, I took, these are comments that were made during the, during the hearing.
Okay. Retail and appropriate...
Retail, retail and appropriate commercial areas. And I guess the building inspector, according to Mr. Whiteside, has come up with some suggestions, something about an email, but I haven't heard...
He sent me an email saying that you can put commercial in the basement. That was the question.
That was it.
There was a question whether or not commercial could go in a basement.
Okay.
And he answered it saying, yes, as long as it has handicapped access, but along Central Avenue, there is handicapped access.
Okay. All right. That clears that up then. Thank you. The picture, the picture that was on the, on the screen, same thing. What's the difference? So the mansard roof on the fourth floor is going to come back a little? Are they going to be looking down on the roof on the third floor? A little bit there about what you're doing. This I have from previous meetings, so that what you put on the screen tonight is not new. It's the same old, same old.
Right. They haven't, they, they, they rework their, the same old, same old, as you say. So you've got, you've got a point.
Thank you. I'd still like to know what kind, what you're going to do about the parking. The gentleman just before me said it should be underground. Does that mean not in the backyard either? A little confusion there. I didn't see on your, on the overhead here where the entrance to the drive, where the driveway is coming in off Central Avenue. All I saw was what looked like property line. Where's the driveway?
It's where it's always been. We haven't changed any of it.
You didn't show it. You didn't show it on this, on the screen?
Yeah. It's shown on the site plan.
On yours? Where it says property line?
Yes, it's on the layout.
Is that where...
That would be roughly where it'd be.
So that would be where the entrance to the basement parking would be?
Right. That's right.
You can see the curb cut, Margaret, with the, with the curbs there. You want this?
Okay.
You want this?
It's, it still says property line, doesn't say driveway in.
Well, no, you can see the, the curb cut.
All right. Well, it's changed property line to driveway.
Is the driveway. The property line is the driveway. I'm to interpret that as the driveway.
Well, that's where the driveway's going.
Okay. But you see what I'm saying is there are all these confusing issues.
Well, that's why, that's why we've made clear it's just a concept.
The concept.
Yeah.
Oh. We're still on the concept. When will we get to the building?
Well, I've been, the question the board has is whether or not to, say, pursue this concept and do these details that you bring up, because people can't comment on the details without knowing what they are.
Exactly. That's my point, and that's why...
But they can, they certainly can, can comment on the concept.
Well, Mr. Conley already knows what I think of the concept. I'm quoting you, Mr. Whiteside, on something that you said previous, not necessarily to this, to this building or about this building. I think it should be scrapped. It is the ugliest thing I've ever seen in my life, and here it is. The entrance, you drive down Elliott Street into the Central Avenue Business District, and this is what you're going to look at. It screams right at you. It's just ugly and massive. I agree with everybody who's come here tonight and spoken before you.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming in. Yes, sir.
Keith, you're up. Next.
Welcome.
How are you? I thought I missed it. I understand you started late. I was expecting to go home and watch the highlight reel on this, so...
Well, you, who knows? You may be able to do that.
My name is Keith Mills. I live on Hawthorne Road. I also have a little wine shop right across the street from the building in question. I'm also on the combine, you know, committee as well, and I guess you've seen our petitions and everything else, and I guess, I just wanted to add a few. You know, a lot of people have said, you know, both in this meeting and around, is, you know, well, anything is better than what's there now. And I would disagree with that, because you know what? Things can always get worse. And my concern is, it could get worse, and that, you know, this is really, really important, what we're doing here and what you're doing here. You know, I feel on a certain level, in East Milton, you know, we're still trying to straighten some things out over there with parking and all the other stuff, and I would hate to be, you know, for the next 10, 20, 30 years, you know, kind of in the same boat that they're having over there. So I look to you, you know, to really, you know, help us out over there. As we've talked about before, you know, this project really is the linchpin of this neighborhood. I mean, it can make it, it could break it, you know, but my concern is that, you know, we take our time within reason, and we make the right decision to protect the neighborhood and the businesses around here. An issue also that I've kind of been concerned is, you know, we've tried to talk to Mr. Conley on, you know, certain issues and certain things, and kind of feel like he really doesn't want to talk to us. And I can... And I can understand maybe on a certain level. But I mean, you've always encouraged, Alex, you know, for people to go out and talk to the neighbors, talk to the neighborhood, talk to the businesses, to see what's going on, and I don't feel like that's happening. And I think that should be part of the process, and that really hasn't happened. I think kind of giving him the reward of giving him the 1.5 or whatever the number is on this thing is almost tantamount to rewarding bad behavior. I mean, all along, he's pretty much done what he wants to do, and every time we try to talk to him about it, you know, whether it's the tree, meeting with him, whatever, just keeps going on. And again, you know, we would still love to sit down and talk to him to try to make it work. You know, even you at this meeting just a minute ago suggested, well, why don't we give you something instead? And the answer was, no, we want this. Again, I'm not seeing flexibility, I'm not seeing compromise. I mean, this is a process. You know, life is a compromise. We all try to work together and try to make it happen, and I just kind of feel like, you know, you know, one side is giving in, the other side's not. Which then makes me concerned is, if this project, if this project goes forward right now, is like, what's it going to be like, you know, when the construction starts? What's, what's all this, what's this all lead to be? And is it going to be continuing stonewalling and fighting to try to protect the businesses down there? So I guess, long story short, you know, I really think that we need to make sure this happens and happens right, and I look to you guys to do that for us.
Well, who else wants to be heard?
Peter Clint, Cliff Road. I'll have the shortest comments of the evening, my first meeting, it's the first time seeing the building. And when I saw the picture, I felt the impact of the building. And I think my first impression was city, not town of Milton, and my second thought was, I was happy to see the architect's rendition of how to soften that, because I really felt the presence, you know, protruding in to the center of the square there, so. And that's it. So when you look at the picture, does it say to you, this is, is the right solution? I really feel that in that picture. Oh, Peter Clint, 15 Cliff Road?
Didn't you say that?
Oh, Peter Clint.
Clint, okay.
Oh, 15 Cliff Road?
I couldn't quite hear your last name, thank you.
I think you've said your name three times now.
Oh.
All in the space of three minutes.
Okay.
It's all on television, it's a record.
Thanks for coming in.
My name is Robert Murray, 12 Columbine Road. I've spoken before about my concerns about the building, and, and they remain, my, my neighbors have expressed my opinions on this, so I won't repeat that. One thing I did want to express my concern about, and this is probably a general thing about this kind of development, which is going to be a condo, is who is going to have the long-term responsibility for maintaining the public space? So if benches are put out here, tables, if it's condominium, who's going to keep it clean? And who's going to maintain the tables? Who's going to make it an attractive place? And so maybe you've got an answer on that, what is Norman done of this?
The condo association.
Okay, so that would be written in that they would do that?
Absolutely. That's what they do at the Wharf.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, Alex, up at Fletcher Steel Way, we-
The garden club.
The garden club. Let them stand up.
We'll get the garden club in there.
And they've taken over the responsibility.
Yeah.
No taxpayers' money.
All right, who else wants to be heard on these matters? All right, I think that I see no one. Ah.
Do you have something?
He does look vaguely familiar, I wonder who he is.
The cleanup hitter.
I think he should probably identify himself, since we're not sure.
Peter Jackson, 14 Capen Street, and town meeting member precinct two. I had hoped not to get up and speak tonight, but I think there's some points that really haven't been addressed yet. I'm happy to see that there's been some movement to make some changes to this design, and it's been a long time coming. And, you know, there are some things that maybe can be built upon as a, as a beginning to a conversation. I first want to address the, what's termed the public amenity, and even has been called a park. There's no way that a raised planter with a tree in the middle and some benches around it is a park. What it is, is a puny, poorly conceived, public plaza. It's too small, it's in the wrong place, it doesn't provide public amenity and scale with the, the magnitude of the building and of the commercial area. It's terrifically ill-conceived, and if that, you know, $5,000 investment in a public space is worth a bonus request for 3,000 square feet of condo space, there's just nothing in proportion to what's being requested. And the other thing about that space, they show the street trees at the scale of what they are now, but those are going to grow, and there is not adequate space in that space for a major shade tree and those existing street trees. There's just not enough canopy space that they can all survive. So one, one or the other, either the street trees are going to go, or that tree will never have an opportunity to mount anything, and really isn't adequate space there for that tree to grow to maturity. So that, that, the expression of a public amenity in that corner from a landscape design point of view is an awful failure, and so I think it's got to be totally reconceived. The, the proposal for the upper-story setback, I think it does provide an upper-story setback. I think it, you know, kind of pays lip service to the notion of the zoning of what an upper-story setback is intended to do, and it misses on several areas. One of the, one of the areas is that the upper-story setback should, to comply, should, there should not be a rise in the vertical plane of more than 25 feet. And the vertical plane along that Central Avenue, even with that setback, is 40 feet. And in order to comply, there will have to be a setback after the garage plus one level, and then a second setback after the third level. Or to more close, to closely follow the zoning, the setback would be after the second story, not after the third story, but it's, this is a unique location because of having the garage there, the appearance is the garage plus one story makes the two stories. So it doesn't comply, and there really hasn't been any study of an upper-story setback on the Elliot Street projection. The main part of the building is back far, far enough, I have no problem with that, but there are issues of setbacks on the track side and on the Elliot Street side that have not yet been addressed. One of the purposes for the upper-story setback in the zoning is that the setbacks shall be employed and shall be visually prominent. And certainly, the, the protrusion at the third level isn't in any way a visual prominent. So there is one step back on this, the new proposal, and that's above the third story only. It said, the zoning says that the setback after the second story should be sufficient to maintain a scale appropriate to nearby residential areas. And it's residential, you know, or the nearby areas. What I want to point out in these, this drawing is the scale of these buildings all the way around and the scale of this, where in this proposal, the scale of this building is picked up at this, at this setback, the scale of this building and this building are all picked up at these setbacks. So that is a meaningful setback within the context of the area, and which is the intent of the zoning. And also, the intent of the upper-story setbacks is to meaningfully reduce the appearance of the bulk of the building. And this reduces it a minor amount, the new proposal on the fourth floor, but it doesn't in any significant way reduce the bulk, the appearance of the bulk of the building. So the setbacks, I think, are, are totally inadequate as currently proposed. I do have a question about what was said tonight about the 11-foot ceiling requirement being put on the first floor rather than on the basement level. The intention when the zoning was written was that, that the 11-foot story would be in the commercial space in order to create a more of a commercial atmosphere, that they had high ceilings and retail commercial, that the scale of the interior of the building would be an appropriate scale. So if we eliminate that and put that 10 foot, put 10 feet down in the bottom level, on the basement level, it's going to change the whole character of those commercial spaces. And then putting it up on the second floor where the commercial is-
The first floor.
Putting on the first floor where the commercial is intended to be, most likely be offices and that kind of thing, that's more of a residential scale, and so, so that's, it's more appropriate to change them again.
But of course, if you, if you don't have, if you don't do that, you're going to eliminate a story, because it will no longer be a basement, and-
Well, I thought you said that the basement was worked out.
It will then be the first story.
I thought you said that the basement was worked out.
It is, as long as you reduce the, as long as you reduce that first story to 10 feet.
But I think reducing it to 10 feet is totally opposed to the concept of the zoning and the retail commercial space. The other thing that I, I feel compelled to comment on is that on every project that's come before this board over the last few meetings, whether it's the Milton Hill House or the subdivision, open space subdivision on Hillside Street, whether it's the, the proposed assisted living, and tonight, the subdivision on Brushhill Road, in every instance, it was said that it's important that, that the proponents meet with the neighbors and address their issues and get neighborhood support. Not once in this process has it been suggested, other than by neighbors who've come forward and expressed a willingness to meet with the proponent, not once has the planning board suggested that there's issues in the neighborhood and, you know, that the proponent should have a conversation with the neighbors and see how this can be addressed. And I think the inequity there is just screaming out here of the treatment of this project compared to all the other projects that come before this board. So, you know, I would ask that you give serious consideration to that. And then lastly, at the last meeting, members of the Columbine Cliff Neighborhood Association presented a letter to this board. There, no one on the board appears to have seen that letter ahead of time, although it was provided to them ahead of time. In fact, at least two members of the board noted that it wasn't even in their packets, and it was in their packets. And there's been no acknowledgement by this board, either in comments or anything else, that the, that Neighborhood Association, which represents 900 households right around this project, has made comment and that there are, you know, serious issues out there that need to be addressed. And then yet tonight, you're talking about approval of, you know, a new building concept that nobody's seen before tonight, and a FAR bonus that's come up for the first time tonight. I just think that, that, you know, the board has got to be careful to be more consistent in the way it takes action on this project. Thank you.
Did we, did you have that petition, by the way, Bill? Were you given the petition with the names of the, okay, you've got it there.
We have it. We'll scan it and send it out.
Okay, fine. Who else?
Good evening, thank you. My name is Andrea Palmstrom, and I've been sitting here, and I haven't heard from anybody on Elliot Street. My husband and I and my family, we live at 151 Elliot Street, and we've been living there since 1982. I'm not going to bore you with any technical speak because I'm not an architect, but all I can tell you is to convey to you my concerns. And the concerns of the people on Elliot Street, parking, traffic, height of the building, and somebody mentioned the Man Side Building, keeping within the construction of the homes on Elliot Street, and I beg to differ. The lighting and the noise. And somebody also mentioned about, you know, reaching out to the residents on Elliot Street. A lot of times, the people on Elliot Street feel as though we're second-class citizens, that we're not worthy of, you know, being treated the same as other parks of Milton. So that's all I have to say. Palmstrom, P.A.
Yeah.
L.M. S.T.R.O.M.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here's a cleanup hitter.
Good evening. Peter Mullin, 19 Gaston's Road, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Two. I was, there were some people that were here earlier for this public hearing who needed to leave and asked me to at least note for the record that they were here. George and Barbara Fournier from 34 Waldo Road, and they were not in favor of the pending proposal. Laurie Stillman and Robert Rosowski of 29 Waldo Road, they were here, they're not in favor of the current proposal. They asked me to say that they feel that all of a sudden there's a rush to judgment, and that they feel like the applicant may, may be employing a strategy of holding out, trying to wear the board and the neighbors down, and then be able to get things that the applicant might not otherwise be able to get. I'd like to, Mr. Chairman, you suggested that the board ought to take a vote, or at least indicate how it's thinking about the FAR bonus tonight, to give the applicant some guidance as to the development. I think that's a good idea. I think that it would be helpful to give everybody guidance with regard to whether that bonus is likely to be awarded or not awarded. As I understand it, the process is that the board only votes, actually formally votes to approve or disapprove a special permit at the end of the process, but certainly giving some guidance along the way, although nobody's bound to stick by that position, it's, you know, if done in good faith, it can certainly move the process along. I'd like to suggest to the board that it should not award the FAR bonus, the requested bonus, the FAR to 1.64, which we're told is approximately 9%. I point out to the board that in the-
10%, I think, yeah, I have 10%.
Well, Mr. Warren has said it's 9%. You know, I, I don't think you can tell from what's-
I have 10%.
Well, I think-
Here's a math, I didn't calculate the FAR.
In the, in the zoning bylaw, the first section, the Central Avenue Plan Unit Development is Section J, and the first point, under the purpose of this provision, this is why the zoning bylaw that allowed planned unit development was adopted. And among the purposes is that allowing this kind of combined business and residential use, one of the purposes is providing significant amenities, plural, to the public. If you go over to the section, I guess it's 4B, where it talks about the floor area ratio, the board is permitted to award a bonus. It's not required, it's never required to award any bonuses. It's always a discretionary thing by the board, but it's permitted to offer a bonus or provide a bonus if a development will preserve, if feasible, or replace in kind one or more significant natural features on the site. That's one requirement. And a second, that's conjunctive, so there has to be more than one thing to qualify for a bonus, and then it's still discretionary. The second thing is provide significant amenities, again plural, to the public. I'm wondering if we can- I'm wondering if we can, I guess, the, if the board is still here, isn't he? Do you have a larger version of that?
This is all we have.
That's all you have? The so-called public amenity is this area here and this area here. I, I think we can project it with that projector, if the board will permit me. Can you project it?
Go ahead, Peter. David wants to see it.
Can you project it?
I know, put something on top.
Okay. I'll turn the projector. Do you want to project it? The applicant told the board that this distance, that this end of the so-called, what we once referred, in one point was referred to as a park, is thirty-four feet. That thirty-four feet, that was calculated using the eight-foot public sidewalk. This is all public sidewalk here, that's colored in brown as if that's part of the park. There is no park here. We haven't, it's not on this drawing or any of the drawings that we've been shown, but there's been an estimate that this area is thirty by fifteen feet, I believe. Is that correct?
Thirty by fifty.
Thirty by fifty. And the estimate is that there's fifteen hundred square feet there. That includes the sidewalk, correct?
Right, whole area.
So that it's something less than that, that's the amenity that's being offered. The same is true with regard to this. This is a public sidewalk right here that's being colored in brown as if it was an amenity. The concept that Cheryl, the guy has put up here has all of the public amenity consolidated in this area at the intersection of the two streets. You can do much, much better with regard to a public amenity if you reject this concept. Let me suggest to you a process. The developer has not been willing to talk with the neighborhood. In response to a letter that we sent to the My Town Matters, the developer said, "Oh, I met with Cliff Columbine back in two thousand and six and they approved the project." I've talked to people who have, who have been continuously serving on the board of Cliff Columbine, and there are at least a couple of people that remember he did come to a meeting at which a few board members were present back in two thousand and six, but that's certainly not approving this plan or any other plan. There was, there has been no meetings whatsoever from the day he came and filed his application with this board. I don't think he has any incentive right now to meet or talk with the neighbors. If you indicate tonight that you are not going to give him the FAR bonus with regard to this proposal, he will then have an incentive to meet and talk with the neighbors. I believe that the neighborhood is very interested in having redevelopment on that site. I, I believe that the petitions that we submitted with regard to that site show things that the neighborhood is interested in. We're not stuck on any one of those things. We're willing to have variances from the existing zoning bylaw in order to get a building that the neighborhood can live with for fifty or a hundred years. As I understand the voting requirements for this board, in order for a special permit to be adopted, it's going to require all four members that are, that are able to vote on this application to vote in favor. So if any one of you says tonight that you're not willing to award the FAR bonus that's being requested, one, you send a message that, look, your project may not be adopted, and two, you, you probably should go talk to these neighbors and see if you can work something up. That's a very standard practice with regard to this board, Planning Board. You know, the Milton Hill people have been meeting and talking for over a year with neighbors. They've been very responsive. All the other projects that come before you, you told people tonight, meet and talk with the neighbors. I'm suggesting to you that the way you can do that is to send a message tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? I think that my view is this, that we have a petition with a hundred and sixty names on it, which I haven't read, and I'm not prepared to go forward on either the bonus or the concept until I've read that.
I think it's very reasonable.
And I think we should continue this until our next meeting.
What's on our agenda for the next meeting?
I think it has to be the next meeting.
I just want to know where to place them. And while Bill's looking at that, I would add a further requirement is that I think that the developer really needs to be meeting with the neighbors as we have requested every single other project that has come before us.
Well, I think that we've requested it on this project also.
Well, I'm going to stress-
Although the neighbors, the neighbors are, I, I note that for a long time, there weren't many neighbors at our hearings.
That has changed.
It has changed.
And I think the perception of this has changed.
I think that that's quite, quite right.
And I think it is imperative that the neighborhood and the developer meet prior to our next meeting.
Well, well, we've already got it on at eight, ten. Okay.
Eight, ten?
On the twenty-eighth.
That's-
Oh, it says hearing continues.
That's July twelfth.
Yeah, but that's what we're talking about.
That's being-
That's what we're talking about.
I know that, but I'm saying that those numbers could get pushed back, but-
Yeah, the bottom left subdivision needs an hour.
You've got Hillside and-
Right. Yes, yes.
It makes sense to have them meet with the neighborhood before we have our next meeting, hearing on this.
Well, who is the neighborhood? Who is the neighborhood? Is it the Central Avenue revitalization?
Before we meet again, they should talk to the neighbors.
Open it up to all the neighbors who want to come. Have a public meeting with the neighbors. Remember when we did seventeen Canton Avenue and we told them to go and meet with the neighbors and they held public meetings with the neighbors? Yes.
What have we been doing for the last two years?
They haven't had a one-on-one. They've had, they've had where the developer presents to us and the neighbors present to us, but they have not, my understanding, and please jump in if I'm wrong, they have not had a conversation together. Seventeen Canton Avenue, we sent them straight out to discuss it with the neighbors. Hillside at our last meeting, we told them to discuss it with the neighbors. Milton Hill House has been meeting with the neighbors for the past one to two years. They should be meeting with the neighbors. Not, not presenting separately to us, meeting with the neighbors.
But the colonies have been here for a week and we did meet-
But the revitalization committee in the, I believe it was the spring into the summer before we filed, and we had support from the revitalization committee for our original proposal with the massing where it is.
I understand that, but did you meet with the neighbors? The revitalization committee are the neighbors.
For the fir-, for the first year of this process, nobody showed up to these meetings. And there was one former member that was generating a lot of this stuff and is the root of what's going on here tonight.
Did you at any point at all meet with the neighbors?
We met with the Central Ave. Revitalization Committee. We also met with Columbine, like what Peter had said, we met with Columbine Cliffs for the amendments in two thousand and seven with our specific design. It was two thousand and seven.
Six.
It was not six.
Prior to the zoning.
It was two thousand and seven.
Prior to the zoning.
For the amendments of the zoning.
When you, before you presented this specific plan, the original specific plan-
What they're driving at now, they want to redesign my building. I am not redesigning my building.
I understand they want to redesign your building. I appreciate, I, I get that.
And their comments over the past twenty months have been anything but cordial towards me. Now they're telling me they want to meet with me and talk and have a nice time.
Yeah, but even the people who are here tonight aren't the only neighbors you have. You know, we just heard from a few people who have never been here before tonight, never. And they're expressing concern. Did you hear somebody say they feel like a second-class citizen? How are you going to react to that?
That is, that's a product of this process going on for as long as it has, and people are going to show up and they're going to continue to show up. And that's, that's the nature of what has happened and how this thing has evolved.
So you're suggesting we shouldn't have a public process?
We have a public process, but this thing has gotten extended and there's a group of people who do not want this design. But it doesn't mean that the design doesn't meet the zoning. They're saying it doesn't meet the zoning and they're quoting the zoning. I disagree with them. Our design does meet the zoning.
But you have yet to prove that.
We've proved it here tonight. I had a comment out of the, out of the chair tonight.
My view is this.
What are you talking about?
And my view is this, that meeting with the neighbors, if you don't want to meet with the neighbors, is not going to be productive. The neighbors have a forum and the forum is our public hearing, and the neighbors have expressed a number of views, and we're going to consider those views and determine what we determine.
However-
And I, I mean, they have, they've put themselves on the record, we have the information, and we can, we can decide. That's what we were elected to do.
I agree. I don't have any problem with that, but I do also know that the neighbors have a point that at every other meeting, we have suggested that the proponents, the applicants, the developers, depending on what it is, meet with the neighborhood. And they're right that there's a consistency issue.
There is, well, I, I mean, I, we do suggest that you should meet with the neighbors. No question about that. As far as requiring them to meet with the neighbors, I don't think that, I don't think we should do that.
Strongly suggest that, underlined in bold font.
I think we should suggest that they meet with the neighbors. I don't, I have a feeling those meetings are not going to be very productive. That's my feeling.
I think the message from the board should be that we strongly suggest that you meet with the neighbors prior to our next meeting.
All right. What does the board feel about this?
I feel the very same way. I think it's, you don't have to succeed, but the effort would be, would say something. I mean, it doesn't mean the meeting will succeed anything, but the effort, just a point of the effort to say that I've made an attempt. I mean, you can take away from the suggestions, I, you don't have to allow people to redesign, if you're all within code, if you're all within code. But I mean-
No, I, I don't think that we're going to put you into this discussion, Peter. Ed?
I feel the very same way that, those are these people tonight, I don't think you've got one person on your side, I can't excuse. That impacts us.
I, I haven't been with this process for a long time. I just started to read tonight that as the process started, apparently you weren't seeing a lot of attention from the public. So it got to a point where all of a sudden, the public's very attentive to it and maybe taking an adversarial approach to you and you to them, and it got to that point before you had a chance to introduce yourselves to each other. But again, you know, the effort would say a lot to everybody, I think, just the effort. Again, when you make it have to do something, it doesn't mean you succeed, I think.
I've seen two or three or four plans. It looks like the architect has heeded some of the suggestions and, so he's obviously listening.
I think tonight was a good-
And Steve is paying the bill, so he must be acquiescing to the fact that, yeah, he's taken some comments and he's, like this latest plan.
I, I think this, this latest plan was an excellent move forward. I don't think it's quite far enough, but I think it was a great move forward. I appreciate you doing that, absolutely.
I, I think I agree with Alex. I don't know, because not having participated in any of the Roman days and some of the tactics that they used, I can see the neighbors, I'm, I'm a neighbor, I can see their point. But I, I hear the same comments every, every, every other week when we meet, the same comments, the same comments. And Steve comes back and Warren comes back with little changes here and there, so obviously they probably don't want to initiate some of the things that the, that the neighbors want to see. And they know what they can build, I'm sure they've cost this out, that packing underneath is going to cost a fortune, and that's, that's a great thing. And he has yet to clean up his site. That twenty-one E might drive him into the ball house. I mean, that was a mill building and God knows what substances they used there and arsenic and so forth, so. I, I think we should at least start with this, this concept. It seems like this enclosure. I must say that Peter called me and I tried to intercede with, with the colonies, with, with Peter, and just, just to get the thing moving. And I don't know what happened, so.
I didn't get a call.
You didn't get a call.
So how about suggesting that they meet with the neighbors?
Do you honestly think anything will come from that?
I don't think, I have a feeling they won't, I have a feeling they won't meet with the neighbors, but I think that certainly, certainly suggesting that it would be a good idea, would be a good idea.
Well, it, it might be a good idea, and again, with my conflict of interest that I have here, but I've heard, I've heard what most of the people are concerned with. And it's the same thing.
And they probably will say it again.
That's right.
Can I just point out something, that the planning board is only part of the process of this building if and when, if and when, we approve a special permit. There's a whole construction process. And right now, you've got a developer and many members of the neighborhood who look at least from this position as though they're in an adversarial relationship. And if you're going to-
It does look that way, doesn't it?
It does, doesn't it?
I would say that maybe they are.
But my point is, we had some issues with communication with thirty-six Central Avenue, if you remember. We had people coming in and telling us that-
Eight years.
There were problems, going back and forth on that. Why wait until the construction process starts to start talking to people? You know, this is the time now, we've had requests on the petition for a construction management plan, we're going to need to know how that's going to work.
Great idea.
Which is a great idea.
Great idea.
You know, we've talked about doing it before.
We've done it before.
No, I mean, we talked about with this project, doing it before.
And we certainly would do it.
Exactly. But my point is, this is the time where the developer and the neighborhood can be working out these issues in conversation, and they need to start that process, both sides need to start that process of talking to each other. Because if this gets to a building stage, this is going to be a messy project. You know, we know there are some potential issues with the building, we've heard neighbors be concerned about what happens when it comes down, you know, is there anything living in there? What about hazardous materials? We've heard those concerns. Now is the time to be starting to talk about those. And maybe both sides set some ground rules for the meeting as far as what's discussed and what isn't, maybe it's a free-for-all, I don't know, let them decide that. But I think they need to be talking, and they need to be talking because once this board signs off on something, you know, it's out of our hands. It's then into the developer and the neighborhood of whatever project that is, and they're, both of them, are the ones that are going to be living with that on a daily basis. So they need to be able to talk to each other. And this is a good time to start that.
If we did, of course, we'd have to ask the town planner to be there as the mediator.
I don't think he's going to accept that role.
But we have not given him any guidance at all as, or at least acceptance of what we think.
I'm suggesting that we have a petition that we haven't seen. It's signed by a hundred and sixty people. I don't think that we should proceed without reading it.
Well, they have the petition. What's it saying? I mean, it's but in any time-
It's nine twenty-five, we've got two more, two more things to do, and it doesn't, it seems to me we can wait till next meeting to determine these things.
I'd love a sick wife at home to come here. I gotta get a babysitter, okay?
I understand that.
So why don't we just read to see what the petition says? What's the petition, petition saying?
It makes, you know, multiple comments.
Oh, multiple comments.
Yeah. You could probably read out the bold of ones rather than the country.
Well, Mr., these are some of the things that Cheryl talked about and-
Right, they're-
Sure. And, and-
I want to read it.
Take your time, Brian.
Say again?
Take your time.
We're the other side, our neighbors.
I'm not, I'm not going to, I'm not going to call for a vote tonight. Get that out to the members. What we're going to do is continue this hearing until the 12th. At what time? 9 o'clock?
I'd suggest 8:00.
8:30?
8:30.
12 to 8:00.
Can I?
Yes.
No, I don't want to do this.
But I'll do what you just said.
What?
I said, I know I don't want to do...
You will, you will...
I'll facilitate the meeting if that's going to work. But that, that has to be...
I'll call Peter.
We'll set something up. I've talked to Peter before.
Between now and July 12th, there's not sufficient time.
We, we need the next, the next hearing.
You want, you want the 28?
Peter, did you just hear what Mr. Tomlin said?
26, 26?
Good.
And Bill, will you keep after these people, please?
Did you hear that? Steve is going to...
The architect will not meet the 26th.
We will, what about the week before that?
The 19th?
19th.
Shouldn't we wait to see what Peter and...
No, no, we have to continue to a time certain.
Well, we, the 19th? You change the date and then we'll extend it at that point.
Well, wait, wait, wait. Why not the 26th? You probably won't have any plans at that point anyway necessarily. We'll still have to be giving you directions. So I can't imagine you're going to be drawing up. But you can report back in the meeting. We can talk about, that would be perfect. Let's do the...
Just sort of make it that one.
Exactly.
Okay.
Is that okay?
The 26th?
26.
26th. Ed?
What time do we got? That's getting...
It's over.
7:00. You want to start them or you want to?
Let's start.
Let's start them.
I think, I think everybody's been more than patient.
Give them an hour and a half.
I can't do that.
All right, give them an hour.
I'll give them 45 minutes to start. You've got...
All right, give them, you better, you better make some music. Because you're only getting 45 minutes.
So your discussion...
So when are we starting?
They're going to meet at 7:00.
7:00. Perfect.
Okay.
7:00 to 26.
Is the public invited or is it kind of like a little deposition?
He will, he will meet.
They'll meet before, they're going to meet before, they'll come back on the 26th and say, here we are.
We're not going to, we're not going to specify how.
If we've accomplished, if we didn't.
Good. There you go.
Okay, thanks.
Excellent. Great job, Mr. Chair.
All right, 36 to 50 Elliott Street. Ned, we're rewarding you for doing a variance rather than a zoning change.
Who do you want?
Good job. I'll see how the babysitter.
Okay, well, you can...
Who's that? We can do that. I need a ride. My trouble.
Have you, you haven't missed one of this?
What is this?
This is 36 to 50.
He's missed only one.
Well, you could only miss one.
I'll hang on.
Well, no, but on 36 to 50, we don't, it's, it's site plan and it's, all we need is a majority.
I can't go anyways because...
No, there you go. All right.
Unless someone can pick you up. But she's doing one.
She's doing mine.
Sodium has gone up to 135.
Everyone clear out if you don't want to listen to the next...
36 to 50.
And once again, we've rewarded Jason with...
All right.
Proceed.
Good evening and thank you. We're here to continue public hearing on the application for site plan approval for the projects at 36 and 50 Elliott Street on Midport Green. I'm here on behalf of Sullivan and Hamley, which is the owners of both the property, the Milton Hill House at 36 Central, 36 Elliott Street, and the properties that they've purchased at 50 Elliott Street. We were here a month ago with a preliminary presentation with a significant overview of the entirety of the project from a technical perspective. We were originally to meet with the Board of Appeals again last week, the 20th. But because there are a couple of issues that remain, we have pushed that hearing off until July 31. And our hope is that tonight, and if necessary, well, we know it will be necessary on July 12th, that we can reach technical approval and perhaps site plan approval conditioned upon a favorable vote of the Board of Appeals. There were generally two issues remaining that we understood the need to present back to the board. One was to respond to comments about how the front street, the Elliott Street side of the building would relate to Elliott Street. And we have a rendering to show with respect to that plan. And the second was to deal with stormwater and drainage. The project proponent and his engineers are still resolving those issues with Joe Lynch and his staff at the DPW. So we're not prepared to address that issue. We think they're close. But I think Mr. Lynch is on vacation this week and there's some additional information to present to him between now and hopefully the 12th when we'll be back to present the final stormwater plan in that regard. So we think there's essentially one thing to show this evening. And Billy Duzette? So I'm joined at the table by Michael Liu, who is the project architect, and Blair Hines, who is the project landscape architect. We, a couple of things we were asked in particular to consider as we focus on how the project presents itself to Elliott Street. And one was to, a request to provide a, an entrance, a legitimate entrance to the building from Elliott Street. So this is the last plan that we showed in sort of this view. There's a, there's actually on the plan, this is a, the laundry, the, the...
Service.
Service area for the removal of trash and other things. There's actually a ramp that would come down to a rake in the wall here. And there's a stair that comes out over here and down. So those are elements that are shown. They're just not shown with respect to this view. Well, we're now showing and what we've done to create a... a front entryway. We've taken this unit on the first floor, which is a two-bedroom, originally a two-bedroom unit, and have reduced it to a single bedroom here and created a first-floor entryway. There's sort of a covered area here. The door is inside. And that would then connect through a stair up to the second-floor entryway, which is on the uphill side of the building. So we're reducing the, the bedroom count by one in order to create this element. That requires, because it is now a formal access, it requires handicap accessibility. And currently, the, the plan is to come out and then down with a, with a break in the slope here and then down and down. It's a long run here. There's some suggestion that we might look at whether we can move it here to sort of a switchback, which would eliminate this and allow us to have more of a landscape scheme along here. But that's a significant change to provide a front entryway. You know, we need to dress it up a little bit, perhaps with, you know, some signature lighting and things like that to make it present itself as a, identify itself as an, as an entryway. But that is the, the physical concept that's being proposed. As you can see, that's open with the stone columns here and then the railings down. The other thing that we've done is we are maintaining balconies, but we've cleaned up the look of the balconies. Nice, clean look attached to the building. And what we like about the buildings, we know that, about balconies, there are some that don't like them and some who do. But they engage the street. And I think they, we think they engage the street from a, from a populated perspective. It breaks up the wall. It provides life on the street side of the building and it presents the, the life to the street. There will be significant landscaping, all in the green space along here. Mr. Hines previously presented a significant landscape plan as to how that would be done with combination of shrubs, trees and the like. We've also continued to present, if the town thinks appropriate, trees within the sidewalk itself so that it breaks up the, the presentation of the building. But those are the two major new elements. And I don't know if, Michael, you want to add at all to the consideration that went into that?
Yeah. So Ned's done, I think, a pretty good job of describing the changes. This entrance, just so you know, is, goes into a lobby at the lower level. If you were to follow that lobby, which is the width of a bedroom, so it's, say, 12 feet wide, it would come to a two-story space with a monumental stair that connects to the lobby on the second floor to the other entrance. So the two entrances are not divorced from one another. So we're making an attempt internally and how the building works to connect to the two so that, so that it doesn't feel like really a secondary entrance. Obviously, it will be convenient to get to Elliott Street, as other folks have pointed out. But one that actually has a visual connection to the amenity spaces on the, the upper level. The other thing that we did is that we, previously in the earlier scheme that you, that we showed, the, the balconies really felt sort of a little bit ad hoc. And so we have tried to organize them in a way that makes sense. The composition of the building, as you can see, is an overall asymmetrical, but it's composed of local symmetries, this piece in particular. And so that sort of helps reinforce that reading. I would add also that Ned had touched on the idea of maybe that we might think about reworking, reworking the ramp so that we don't have a double sort of wall. You know, there may be some possibility of having that work on this side, in which case you'd have just a set of steps here, which in some ways is, would be nicer, maybe more, less institutional looking.
Yeah, one of the, one of the issues to deal with is that this slope is too steep under the current handicap accessibility code. So it needs a longer run here. So the thought is if we could step this way out and then maybe down and switch it back to here, you could accommodate the same thing and eliminate a fairly significant element here. And then that would accommodate more significant plantings within the green space behind that retaining wall. I just completely lost that other thought that I had.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I think, right now, I appreciate the difficulties you're having with the slope, but, and I also appreciate the fact that you're going to be adding details to this. But I note, for example, that you've got two entryways into that quarter and they're, they're different proportions to each other. You know, having them both be similar widths and heights would make it, I think they are the same height, but they're not similar widths, might help. If at all possible, having a staircase that goes directly up into that main entrance from the street might be better. I agree that the ramp is problematic and that you're having two walls going between you and the sidewalk. And so if there was any way to switch it back on the other side, that might make more sense. And then have a grand entry up.
The other thing I might mention is that, I'd said a switchback, but it might also be possible just to have a walk sort of do this, which in some ways is nicer than a switchback.
I think, I, I agree. And especially if you have the landscaping around that so that you have this, maybe this curvilinear piece going up to that side entrance there and then something that went from the main entrance straight down to the sidewalk. So you have much more of a direct connection. The way it is now, it's, it's still not a direct connection to the street. I do like the fact that on the internal aspects, you are connecting the entries that way. I think that makes a great deal of sense. So, but that, I think, needs a little bit more work. And I, I think the, the position of the balconies makes a lot, it's a lot more coherent than it was. And I appreciate that change.
How high is, is that wall in the front? About six rises? One or six rises?
The, the overall change in elevation is about 40 inches. And then we have a small ramp internally because we can't quite get the full elevation we need. But as you can see, the ramp is actually going in the wrong direction. I mean, it's going against, the grade is not helping us. The grade is falling away.
Right. Because the crown of Elliott Street is essentially here.
Right.
So you're actually chasing down the hill, trying to chase that grade there. So it might be, this, this is an area that might be, may make more sense. Obviously, we'd reduce that, all of that wall in there and maybe make it more graceful. But this, the concept is that we are focusing on here, removing a bedroom and creating that internal connection there. You know, there's always the tension that began to create the possibility for people to chew up parking spaces on the street because if they park and run in, particularly if they're living on the lower, rather than go in and around. But, you know, that's a matter for, obviously, the town enforcement in terms of the types of parking that's allowed. But there is adequate parking on the site. You know, now we've got 99 spaces for 98 total units between the two, bedrooms between the two buildings, the two developments, which is now slightly more than one-to-one in terms of a bedroom to parking space ratio.
Yeah, I think that, again, anything you can do with the accessible ramp that makes it look like less, oh my God, I'm an accessible ramp staring you in the face and more, this just happens to be a path that slopes gently up, I think would be much more attractive. And again, not separate the building so much from the street.
We agree.
Any other questions?
It just looks so busy. It just looks so busy, you know, it seems as though you guys have answered all the questions that everybody has on yourself, but the stairs coming straight out to the street would, like you say, you know, to dress it up a little bit.
Yeah, here would be a...
Right, as well as being able to put some shrubbery or whatever around it, more nicely sloping around.
Right.
And does a dump truck pull in for the ways? Is there a dumpster inside?
No, just pull up on the street, roll the units out, load back in. They'll do it probably two or three times a week.
And you don't have to worry about trucks going over that path, because they're on the side, so that makes it even more likely that it could be used.
Well, okay, we will consider the revised landscaping plan to, in due course, but the building, you're actually not having a lot of trees obscuring it, is easily seen. And the porches are a little bit like a three-decker, but...
Do we have three deckers in Milton? Got a couple?
Yeah, definitely so.
But I think those porches on three deckers are awfully useful.
I just think people having access to be able to sit outside is very important.
Looking beautiful, right?
So I, let's see what, does the board have questions? Because if no, let's see what the, see what the people in the audience think of this.
I don't see any chimneys. What's it, all electric?
There would be, there would be a flue, which would be internal, inside, in the roof.
Or heat pumps and so forth.
There's a, there's a...
Your well.
Mechanical well on the roof where everything's buried, and then comes out. And mechanical rooms and storage rooms on the first floor, bike storage on the first floor, things like that.
For better or worse, the lowest level, you know, on the backside, you can't put units on, because it's in the inside of the hill. So there's a lot of space back there where you'd have storage and mechanical, and all that stuff would be against the hill.
All right, why don't you turn off the protectors? And why don't we, if the board doesn't have any questions, people in the, people who'd like to be heard on this plan, and whether or not the planning board should advise the Board of Appeals that the planning board, the planning board...
Is generally in favor? Not specifically, because we haven't looked at the site plan, but...
The planning board, let's see, what is the...
We want to get from the neighbors.
The magic word. No, but what we're going to be saying, if we endorse this, we would not say we were going to give site plan approval, but say that in general, it would...
Support the application?
Say that the plant, that the site plan is capable of being, that the site is capable of being developed as presented from a technical perspective.
That works.
How can we make that statement? We're not professionals.
Because we're the planning board.
Well, Ned's, that's, a lot of stamp, but I still can't see.
Well, part of it, Bernie, would suggest that the town engineering department is undertaking its reviews. Significant consideration for them is the stormwater drainage, which we've been spending a great deal of time on with them, and so we wait that final outcome, present back to the business board, but otherwise, you know, the site, you think, can handle what's being proposed here, and that's what the plant, the Board of Appeals, is anxious to hear, whether or not they approve the variances, and come back to you with a final site plan approval.
The site is capable of being developed in accordance with the plans, and the design is generally acceptable, and the plan is maybe more than generally, and the design seems appropriate, seems attractive and appropriate.
What was, what was wrong with the simplicity of the last project? Are we going to approve in concept?
Yeah, concept.
And concept is a big term.
We've got a building, and the design of the, of the concept is, if we could say the design of the concept is acceptable, just to cop out, but the design of the building seems acceptable.
Meet your design standards?
Do we know what the, do we know what the siding is? I mean, you know, the muttons and Alex, you have...
That's DPA now.
The design... Well, that would actually be our, our site plan approval would be us, we would do the muttons.
So...
And the design of the building.
I don't want to drag it out, but I'd love to hear from the DPW, I mean, what about the stormwater from the side of the building?
They'll be back to us for the site plan approval. Right now, they still have to come to us for that. Right now, they're in front of the ZDA. Once the ZDA approves, more of us, they come back to us and get site plan, it's a concurrent process.
I mean, I think what these folks want to have is to go to these other authorities saying the planning board finds it acceptable.
Right.
So I mean, just to try to begin to say that it's conceptually acceptable, leaves the door wide open and allows them to take it to the other authorities, as in the planning board finds it conceptually acceptable.
Either somebody from this board, or I have to take care of your words to ZDA.
I like what the PE just said.
He can do that.
To what?
Carry their words to the ZDA.
Are you going to stamp it, though?
No.
Why don't we hear while we're working out our precise...
No, I think, I think what he said is...
Well, let's just...
That stormwater stuff that you're looking for is being reviewed, one, by the DPW, two, the DPW has an outside consultant working on that same issue. And now you've got four different, at minimum of four, review engineers looking at that project.
How about this? The site seems capable of being developed in accordance with the plans, and the design of the building is acceptable, subject to details to be established on site plan approval.
Good.
Would those details include modifications discussed tonight about the location of the ramp?
I would think so.
Good.
We could say the design of the building and landscaping.
Perfect.
Now, you want to hear from the revitalization committee?
Very much so, yes.
But we wanted them to know what we were, well, what are, just sort of like the last hearing, we said what we were going to do, and they didn't do it.
Okay.
But this is what we planned to do. So revitalization committee, what do you have to say about this?
Want to interrupt you? Just read, you can all, slide over one. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for having us here tonight. It's nice to see you here.
Welcome. Sorry to keep you so late, but we...
Things happen.
We don't see, we seem to do a lot of talking on this board.
We'll try to be brief and concise.
We were asked to be part of the process by Ned Corcoran, to provide a forum for the neighbors and the development team to get together as they were hashing through some early schemes, some early options, and also to add the expertise of the committee members to try to come up with a solution that would have some support before it moved forward to the more formal committees, the planning board, zoning, and things like that. So that's what we provided, we had multiple meetings, there's a lot of, a lot of good discussion, neighbors had some good import into it, and I think that things moved along rather well. So as we hit the last solution that Ned is now bringing forward, we developed our recommendations that we agreed to back on May 9th, and we had sent a copy to Emily, who was the chair at that time, and we just kind of liked to walk through them, and kind of walk you through them and explain the reasons why for our recommendations. The focus, most of the focus in the design meetings were on locating the building on the site, and then how it would impact primarily the residential neighborhood. We didn't spend a lot of time on the focus on Elliot Street, I think rightly so, we spent more time with the neighbors, because that was the more immediate concern. But as the project is progressing now, we want to present, focus more attention on the Elliot Street side, because that's what the town, most, the majority of the town will see, is go up and down Elliot. So our item number one is that we felt that the exterior of Elliot Street needs further design review. I feel that the building is very boxy on that side, especially that main, that main stretch in the middle. It's just one long flat facade with three balconies kind of tacked onto it. We recommend that, you know, whether you go back to the PUD section on design guidelines to look at how that could be broken up, that's one option to look at it. Then we also are recommending that the balcony space be incorporated into bay windows. The concern there is there's no way to control what the tenants will place on the balconies and how that looks as the rest of, because that's almost the front door of Milton from the Dorchester side, so if you come around and you see these three balconies, they're even tighter together now, and you see bikes out there, or different storage things, it's not going to be a real attractive facade anymore, and there's no real way to control what people put out there. So we think the best way to deal with that is to do what they did on 88 Wharf, which would put like a box bay on it. You'd still could have large windows, you still could have your views, you could put what some people call Juliet balconies, which are basically would be a pair of French doors on the bay with a little six-inch balcony, so it gives you the impression that you have a balcony, you can open the doors, it feels like you have outdoor space, but there's no way to store anything out there. It didn't seem to hurt the sales of 88 Wharf at all, and those condos went quickly. They have equally incredible views, if not more incredible views, and the only place they seem to have balconies is up top, where they're really out of view from the street. So, you know, whether there were some balconies on the top level, and the lower levels got enclosed into bay windows, and it'd be just on this front side, you know, on the sides, on the back, where it's not, not the main view of the building. The committee was more focused on these front balconies, as you come around the corner and see, see that. We wanted the Elliot Street facade to be more attractive to the front door. I'm happy to see that the development team is starting to address that. I think they had some good suggestions tonight, I think, looking at the switchback or bringing it back through the lawn and eliminating that ramp, and having front doors, and having stairs that connect to Elliot Street, I think would start to go a long ways, providing a front door on Elliot Street. It's, it's nice to have the residents engage Elliot Street, get out, be able to walk to the two business areas and not have to come down the driveway all the time, so I think, I think they're starting to address that point that we have. We'd like the developer to provide exterior materials, boards, color samples for the board's review and approval, and we just want to make sure that the architectural language between the Henry House and that new carriage building keeps getting strengthened, and from what we last saw, we haven't seen much of it since the last presentation to us, so I'm not sure where all that stands, but we just want to make sure that those buildings get tied together. Item two is for a shadow study along Elliot Street to see how the sunlight gets affected along the sidewalk, whether it's going to be more in shade in the winter, more in shadow, that it gets iced up, and just to make sure that they're, that the owner will maintain the snow and ice removal on the sidewalk along the property line. Item three was a comprehensive traffic study, taking into account all the projects that have recently been completing or are still being proposed, 36 Henry, 36 Central Avenue, the Henry's Development, 9395 Elliot Street, and 2 Adams Street. So make sure that there's, I know they've all done little pieces, but make sure all gets looked at in one study, because there's a lot going on in this neighborhood. So we want to make sure that gets, gets checked. Just investigation, item four, the truck arrival and departure at the trash delivery zone, meeting it off Elliot Street, just have the safety or whether, I'm not sure, who looks at that in town, whether it's the police chief or whoever should look at that, make sure that there's appropriate areas for the truck to pull off, for the trash bins to come out, and make sure that they're always going back in. You want that to be an attractive area, you don't want any dumpsters ending up outside or getting compacters added over time, and things start showing up on that driveway that aren't showing up now, so something, I think, needs to be written into whatever agreement gets put, that those things don't start showing up over time. Item five is preserve the architectural character of the exterior of the Henry House and its front yard along Elliot Street while protecting and maintaining the blue spruce in this yard. I think we've had already enough with one tree incident, we don't need another nice tree disappearing, so we want to make sure that that spruce gets protected during construction and it gets maintained, and the, and the Henry House gets restored, which I believe is all happening, but it's always nice to put, put some words down to protect ourselves. Item six, the landscape plan was showing new sidewalk trees in front of the building. We think that was a wonderful idea, and we'd recommend that that whole tree line doesn't just occur just in front of this new building, but along the owner's entire property, from property line to property line. And if they could run it to the corner of High Street, even better, but at least if they could take care of that whole section of street from all the properties they now own along Elliot, I think would really help the pedestrian character of that street. That's item six. Item seven is, is similar. For those that may remember, many years ago, we, the committee put forth an item called the Baker Chocolate Walk, we even have a little section built across the street. But we think what's happening now is that with all the work done in the two business areas and the nice sidewalk patterns that have been developed along Central Avenue, if, when these sidewalks get rebuilt after construction, if that same pattern could be built again along with the trees, if the street lighting could match, and so all these districts start tying together, because I, I know, last year, they started to have, I didn't name it, Ned, when the businesses had that...
The Christmas...
The Christmas walk. The Christmas stroll. And it was amazing how many people were going up and down Elliot, if that was started, had a better pedestrian feel to it, if the two districts started getting tied together with the sidewalk patterns, with the lighting, with the trees, it would really start to tie those two business areas together, and I think it'd be a, we feel it'd be a nice addition to the project. We recommend that, number nine, that if there's a place to put some pedestrian benches, that would be nice, because you do have some nice views across the street. Number 10, I know we, all the focus has been on this building, but if there's something that could be done to improve the aesthetics of the Milton Hill House, the existing one, that would be encouraged, if there's something that could be done for that, whether some increased landscaping, I'm not sure what you'd do with that, but...
Could tear it down.
Well, that was one of our early suggestions, or to hide it with this new building. And then we, then item 11, we recommend that a design review process be incorporated as part of the review by the planning board, like, you know, like you've done in the past, reviewing materials, reviewing the muttons, reviewing the details, and that doesn't just slip by. Have some other comments, or if you have any questions about our comments?
Can Steve give it, are these new? Have you given these to the developer?
Yes, yeah, so that's where they've started to react to them.
It seems to me that, you're right about those balconies.
Yeah, it is. No hibachis out there.
Are a problem.
Well, now, don't forget, the Milton Hill House, those balconies, what can go on that is actually regulated, so I understand from a previous discussion, same thing would happen here, is what...
But how do you enforce it?
Well, it's rental.
Well, it's two ways, there's two ways to enforce it. One is you can, in your planning, in your site plan approval, you can provide provisions, and in the leases, we have specific provisions that don't allow bicycles, don't allow other...
Old Christmas trees.
Things on the balconies. And, you know, the owner, as, these are tenants, he can enforce his leases, and he's got, and he has a long track record of maintaining a very attractive and well-maintained property. Say what you will about the design of the Hill House itself, they bought that, they didn't build it, it was built in the 60s, but it is very well-maintained. Property is always maintained, and I think that through their lease enforcement and otherwise, you know, we're quite confident that what will be, what you will see on the balconies will be, will be only items that would be attractive.
And I know in the second rendering, the scheme two, you actually partially enclosed the balconies here, so that, you know, if people have plants or whatever out there, they're actually not completely visible from the street, so those are enclosed rather than the open, um, potentially there.
We don't, we don't really like that, do we? We don't, we don't really like that, do we?
I'm just saying that they're often just an option. I actually prefer the open one better, but.
The open one is better.
Well, you're going to have chairs out there, you're going to have chairs.
I think the committee would prefer to see it closed in, because I understand that there'd be something written in, but was somebody walking down the street sees a bike, has to call the owner, they send a letter, the tenant ignores it, they send another letter, and it's, it could go on six months, and then summer's over, the bike goes away.
But the bays would be a better tie-in, wouldn't they, with the building?
I'm sorry?
The bays would be more tied into buildings.
Yes, and it would help.
These things sort of look like they're.
Three D backgrounds.
Right. And it would eliminate some of the flatness of that facade if you had bays, it'd start to break it up some more.
And, and it would, well, no, it wouldn't. I was, I was thinking of unreleaved vertical, verticality.
Well, it would, because it'd project out, I mean, you know, it would relieve.
In any of that.
The other issue with balconies is they do protrude out, so it does come closer to the street, even though the building's the same, you know, distance away from the street, but it does bring a part of it closer to the street.
Which is what we want.
Why?
Because it interacts with the street more.
But we want landscape, and we want it further away from the street to keep the shadows back.
Yeah, but the balconies aren't going to affect the shadows, you've got the roof line above it.
Oh, I see.
Yes. Also, I question the worry about the bicycles because they will have bicycle storage, so I think that's less likely.
Well, it could be other things.
Yeah, I grant you.
A lot of things could end up.
Slats.
Laundry.
There's another one I wanted to ask, there really isn't much space from between the street and the building or from the top of the wall to the building, and if you have the balconies, you have less space for putting in landscaping and significant large trees to basically soften the facade. And I don't know how deep those balconies are, I assume they'd be four feet from this picture, but I don't honestly know. So that is a concern that, that, that we, I personally don't think these balconies are going to be attractive to people going by. And I think it would be better to have more room for the trees and other landscaping.
I do have a per, I have a personal preference for allowing people to have private outdoor space, which is what I think the balconies provide.
That's right.
However, that's a personal preference, and others may not agree with me, but the ability to.
Use the outdoors.
Step outside, use the outdoors, have it be your own private space, put plants out or whatever, I think that's very important, and I don't think you get that with the Juliet balconies, and certainly not with the bay windows.
I can just speak on the developer's side, they are a very significant component of the project. It's an important amenity to provide to the tenants. It's a beautiful view.
Especially with the view.
Unrestricted, down over the river, it's something that is extremely important to the totality of this project, in the developer's perspective.
But they could be better balconies, couldn't they? I mean, they could, they could, they could, I mean, the reason you have architects is to, when someone says, I'm a little troubled with the balcony, the architect says, oh, no problem, and they work their magic and come up with something.
We can certainly, you know, take our best efforts to work for the magic with respect to the appearance of the balconies, but the notion of balconies is something that is extremely important to this project.
I agree with that. I guess I could just point to 88 Wharf again, that they don't have balconies, and they have million dollar condos, and they sold them, and they have even better views, didn't seem there in that project. The only balconies they have are at the top level where you really can't see what they're doing up there. And that doesn't mean you can't have balconies on other units, so it doesn't mean you can't take away all the balconies, it's just the ones on this side.
So, hang on, let me just go back to this one. So you're objecting to these three sets, but not necessarily to the ones here?
Well, that'd be nice if they could turn that one on the side, off the living room, off the, you know, put it off on the side and not on that main facade.
But then, I'm assuming these units don't go front to back, they're double loaded, so.
Yes, right.
So you're essentially saying to the people here, people who live in these units do not get outdoor space?
Well, there are other units on the backside of the hill that also don't have balconies, so.
Not all units have balconies.
Well, then that's a little bit more fair. But I still just, again, restate a personal preference for having private outdoor space.
I think that maybe you're right, but I think that they could, there has to be, they have to, these, they really don't, it seems to me, the problem is that they don't seem like they're part of the building.
I do agree that that is a problem, and even, in fact, I actually think that the second scheme.
Right.
Almost seems less part of the building.
I, I would, I think that you really have to, you have to work on those balconies because they just don't seem right.
There's something applied about them.
It looks like scaffolding.
Something very applied about them.
Yeah.
It's not helping the flatness of the building behind it.
Right.
See, that, the bays would also help that too, because if you've got a long stretch here of just a flat building, and when that gets built, that's going to look really flat, really large.
I think working out another possibility would be a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I'm, here the developer and say that they want balconies, but it seems to me that if you want balconies, you can, you can get a better design so that you can.
So refine the design of the balconies.
Exactly.
Can't leave the balconies? Get rid of some of that structure in there?
Yeah, that could work.
Yeah.
That's part of what makes them look a little busy. And canter levering might tie them in, it's a possibility.
Yeah. Or whatever.
Something, we'll leave it up to the architect to design.
I think we'll leave it up to the, this is what, you say, the architect, this is my problem, and they come up with the solution.
You have such a bait, Alex.
This is what architects do.
Correct.
I think the owner feels like they can better merchandise these particular units with sitting out there with your pipe and.
I agree with you. I think, I think that there's no reason they shouldn't.
Well, without the doggies, it's not going to look good again.
Or your gas grill.
Yeah, your gas grill. I think your comments were extremely well thought out, all of them.
Does Bill have a copy of that report?
Yes, he does, yeah. It was sent to.
Sent to the selectmen.
So selectmen to the board of appeals, and then to planning board and to board select.
I mean, we can.
We should probably hear from anybody else who wishes to comment on this before we.
I guess we should, you've got a point.
Is your concern the clutter?
Is my concern the clutter? No, my concern is the design. I think the design, it looks like these things have been just, they've been prefabricated somewhere else, and they've, you know, the truck broke down and they said, well, let's put them here.
Well, it's a little harsh, but they don't look like they've been integrated into the building, I grant you that.
Is Salt Architect's amazing?
Well, he is an architect. He designed 88 Wall Street.
Who else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The border color.
Yeah, the more.
He's architects.
Who else wants to be heard on this building design?
So do we decide what we're going to send?
We're going to hear from the public first.
Oh, the public first, okay, but I think we like what we see.
Well, I don't.
Maybe a little.
I think that, I think that I have a problem with this.
I think we should continue to hear from people.
I would be happy to.
If anybody else wishes to speak.
But no one else is rushing forward.
All right, well then.
I will come forward.
All right.
My name's Danielle Chauvet, and I am a direct authority to the building. I live in 12 Morton Terrace. So I don't know if you saw 12 Morton Terrace, it's behind this Henry's house on a dead-end street. That will stay a dead-end street, thanks to the work that we've done with Ned and the I agree with everything that John said before, and especially that the things that we've been promised, which I trust Ned, but this is a business transaction, and I would hope that there, I don't know how, exactly how this works, how this whole process works, but I hope that they will be held accountable for everything that they promised, that the street will be a dead-end street, that there will be no construction vehicles on our street during the demolition process, during the construction process. We've also been promised a little easement into the Henry's property, which is now the Sullivan's property, so that we won't have a problem with plowing our street in the winter, because if the street is cut off exactly where the property ends, we're going to have a terrible time with our street in the winter, because the plow will not be able to plow it properly. So how does that work when concessions are made or promises are made? Who, how are they held accountable for these things?
Well, if the planning board were doing a special permit pursuant to zoning.
Right, and this, they're not in this case.
We would have a decision, but I certainly, the Board of Appeals should incorporate these things into its decision, but the question is whether or not they will. And we could, if you were to provide specifics to Mr. Clark in our recommendation to the Board of Appeals, we could say we want these specific items addressed, if we felt that they were items that should be necessarily addressed. I mean, what you mentioned, what you mentioned, if you write it down, the promises that you say have been made, you can send them to the Board of Appeals directly, or if they seem like stuff that should be addressed on site plan approval, we could, in our communication with the Board of Appeals, mention them. But we'd have to hear from you.
Okay, so I'm confused, because when they're presenting this project, they're presenting all of those things. They're presenting the dead-end street, they're presenting the easement, they're presenting, all of this is being presented, and I assume being approved.
In a written form?
Well, being presented before you, before this board.
Well, I understand, but we're not doing the decision. The Board of Appeals is doing the decision.
Yeah, there's a double jurisdiction. So the Board of Appeals have, has jurisdiction over the special permit, we have it over the site plan.
Well.
That's why, that's the source of the confusion right there, is there's a double jurisdiction.
Yeah, and so I don't know how this works, so that, I, that was a concern, because last time you had a meeting, I was not present, but you did specifically ask for the neighborhood's input. I read it in the Milton Times and I heard it from neighbors that were here, that you specifically wanted people to come through and have a general consensus of how the neighborhood felt about this, because sometimes it's been presented in the Milton Times that we were all on board and it looked like everything was honky-dory, where there has been a lot of work that has been done, contrary to the Henry's factory and that whole process, there has been a dialogue, and it has been very fruitful, but it is just a dialogue and just promises. And so we need to understand, and that's what you're explaining, as, how do we protect ourselves and how do we make sure that what we have been promised, landscaping, dead-end street, all of those things are actually going to happen? Because that's the only reason we're on board.
Well.
Most of it, because there's other things that we still are not totally 100% happy about, but we understand that this is something that is going to happen because it's moving in that direction.
Well, it's, the question you raise is that the application before the Board of Appeals is available for you to read, and I'm sure that there's a great deal in it that you may feel, or that there is additional information that you think should be before the Board of Appeals. And there are two ways of getting the information before the Board of Appeals. One is to write it up and give it to the Board of Appeals. Another is to write it up and give it to the Board of Appeals and give the planning board a copy. And then finally, since they may be matters that the planning board would have jurisdiction over on site plan approval, you might, you might give it to the planning board. But I think the best way to do it would be to give it to both boards.
Okay.
But write it up. I mean, look at the application, and if there is, I mean, someone's got to read it, someone undoubtedly has read it, and if there's stuff that's missing, you can write it down and you can, you can tell Ned that you want the application supplemented with whatever promises or specifications that you may discover are missing.
But in their application, those things are supposed to be listed, correct or no?
Their application is asking for various variances, and I don't know that they're supposed to be listed, but if you want them listed.
You're going to listen.
And they're not listed, you should, you should determine that and then go into the Board of Appeals and the planning board with a written list being very specific, making sure that they are in fact promises or that they are in fact specifications that have been agreed to.
Okay.
Questions on that? I just want to ask Ed another question. Is it a private way or is it a public way?
Morton Terrace is a public way.
Okay.
Ends, and currently opens into a driveway into the back of the Henry House.
Yeah, I've walked it, I've walked it.
Means by which the Mrs. Henry and the tenants of that, of that house have access from.
But it was originally open for a barn way many, many years ago. It was a dead-end street, and then it was open for access to a barn that was there.
But it is, but it is the primary access to the Henry House. There is no, there are a couple.
Not all of Elliott.
Martin Elliott, two, the two families, but there's nothing that comes directly up to Mrs. Henry's, the back of the side of the house. The agreement, and we spent a lot of time with fire chief and others, to agree to a plan, which is part of the plan. So first of all, I would suggest that the plan, as it gets approved both of the four people as a planning board, is going to be very clear with respect to how the site plan will lay out. It will have that cul-de-sac with a, with a fence and plantings that will prevent anyone walking or traveling through the two properties. Both will create the cul-de-sac, so they're both, you can push snow down at the end of Morton Terrace, and so that Danielle and Mrs. Tracy on the other side have a place to back out of their driveways without just backing into the wall at the dead end, their driveways are right on the property line, so they can back out into the cul-de-sac and go out. So that's being done. The height is of the plantings is somewhat restricted by the fire chief's requirement that you be able to run a ladder over the top to get at the corner of the Henry House, and there's got to be some opening fence with a control hose or what they have to attach hose to height. But we are looping the water, so that right now is a dead end, the water dead ends at the end of Morton Terrace. It'll be looping because it would be tying water to the new carriage house and to the main bed, coming with water for services of the Henry House. So those things are happening, they're on planes that describe generally in the written materials, which would be part of attached to whatever decision, or the basis of decisions that would be written.
I think Danielle wants to know who she complains to if these things don't take, take place. I mean, who's the enforcement officer?
The design officer, the building commissioner.
Well, no, if they don't take place, and it's not there, the building commissioner has nothing to enforce. And perhaps you can go to court and, but if it isn't in the variance decision, and you've just put it in the site plan approval decision, I'm not, I would, I would think you would want it in the variance decision. So.
And I'm sorry, because I'm confused, who's determining the variance decision?
The Board of Appeals will write the decision.
The Board of Appeals, so not the planning board, not you, the Board of Appeals.
Right, we have the site plan.
We have site plan approval, but site plan approval is less magisterial than. You have site plan approval, but site plan approval is less magisterial than a variance.
Okay. So the board of appeals is the one that I need to make sure that all of the things that we have agreed upon are going to be actually executed?
I would say yes.
I have a quick question. For both of you, actually, which is when you had these discussions, all of you together, did you produce any written memos back and forth or was it all verbal? Okay, so then you'll need to write what you remember.
Verbal with adjustments to plans.
Okay.
Descriptions and-
And back and forth. I know there were iterative process.
Well, we have an email history.
Okay, and you've got an email. So you can go back through, see what was promised, and then write that up in a document.
Yes.
And then take it to the board of appeals. We would like a copy, of course.
Okay.
So, but that seems to be the best.
There is a draft somewhere of a list of butter conditions we've identified and we're paying attention to.
Excellent.
To be incorporated into the decision of the board of appeals.
Okay, great.
Okay, and one other thing is I think we didn't quite talk long enough about the balconies. Balconies are a problem, and they are a problem because not everybody lives the same way. And in an apartment, a balcony often becomes a place where you put things you don't want in your house.
Garbage and-
Well, for example, I, I am a direct abutter to the Brown house that's on Elliot Street, and they do have their trash can on their balcony. And they did have a Christmas tree for a while, and they do have laundry hanging in the yard. Now, I am not against laundry hanging in the yard. I think it's best if you can dry your laundry outside, it's greener, but it does give a certain feel to a neighborhood. And my concern about the balconies are exactly what came up, that you can write things in in leases, that you are not allowed to put certain items on your balcony. And they can be enforced, but there's always a process to be enforced. There's warnings and there's, so that's just something, a balcony can make a, a neighborhood look extremely trashy if it is not up-kept. And my experience with balconies is that people are always looking for a place to put things outside where they have nowhere else to put it, and it often ends up being undesirable items that they're not ready to dispose of in a proper way, so they end up there and they can sit for months. So that's, that's my concern about the balconies. Even though I don't, I won't see them, but, except when I go on Elliot Street, but that, that is my concern. And I agree with you, Ned, I think that a balcony is important because it does offer, and so that actually was my question, what are the dimensions of the balcony? Big enough to put a little cafe terrace table out there and two chairs or not really able to sit out on it?
I think they're proposing big enough to have some chairs to be able to enjoy the space and sit out.
Okay. And I agree. I think that that is a nice amenity for an apartment. My only concern is what I, what I voiced, is that not everybody lives the same way and has the same aesthetic values, so.
All right, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Clark?
How big are those balconies?
Six feet deep.
Six feet deep.
Sixty inches?
Six feet deep.
Six feet?
Six feet deep, seventy-two inches.
And how close to the street are they?
How close to the street are they?
The setback of the footprint is next twenty-five. Still at nineteen.
What?
Nineteen.
Nineteen inches?
Feet.
Feet, okay. Uh, probably curb, from the curb.
That's what they're telling us, yes.
Wow, okay. Who else wants to be heard?
From the curb, from the property.
From the property line, Alex, not the curb.
Curbs further up.
Nineteen feet from the property line?
Yeah.
Nineteen from our fault.
Nineteen feet. The corner of the building is almost wolf. Not that much. The most corner of the building to the property line is twelve five feet.
So it's nineteen feet from the curb?
Yeah, well, from the edge of the curb.
From the edge of the curb.
All right, well, and so it's maybe less. Okay.
Six feet, nine five.
Six feet. Six feet is, I get it, yeah.
All right.
Okay, who else wants to be heard?
I think we've lost our-
All right, no one else wanting to be heard. We're going to now discuss what we're going to do. I think they need to work on those balconies, and I want to see something at the next meeting. And I don't want to, I don't want to tell the board of appeal, I want to, if someone wants, is watching at this late date-
Late time.
And they have, you know, if there are outstanding promises there, I, I think they should be, they should be respected, and they should be given to the board of appeals to act on because once you get the site plan approval, it's not necessarily timely. So that's what I think you should do. You should consider what the revitalization committee said, but if you don't want to abolish the balconies, at the very least, you should, you should do something architecturally better with them. And come back to us. And what kind of a time, you've already got them on, don't you, Bill?
While he's looking that up, can I add that at the same time, you can address the handicap ramp and the entry wide so we can see a more finished concept on that?
And I plan to draft something so that with any luck, if you've done a, a nice job, that, yes.
I think that was the, that was how the timeline was supposed to work out. I have them down eight o'clock on July 12th, and the issue was that if-
Do you want to come up with something, some kind of language that they could then take to the zoning board of appeals?
Right, there you go.
Okay, that works.
Okay. And how, how long did you give them they're going to make a little presentation?
Well, we lost that eight-ten, eight-thirty project with the Henrys, so they're at eight o'clock and they probably will get pushed. I have them at eight. If you're thinking that Hillside's going to go a little longer.
Longer than what?
They'll be in probably between eight and eight-thirty, but they are clear at eight o'clock.
How much did you give Hillside? An hour at least?
Bosworth, I gave half an hour.
Oh, Bosworth Hillside.
The other one I gave forty-five minutes.
I don't know, Bill, you, you, you know, it's ten-thirty.
Well, which one would you like to have me stop the clock on? Or do you want to meet it?
Well, I think we could do a nine o'clock one. I don't know. I mean, Hillside Street, Bosworth property is going to go for an hour. So let's put Elliot Street on at-
Eight-thirty.
Eight-thirty.
You know, your only problem with doing that is you run the risk of somebody has to cancel, but we've got an hour, Bill.
Yeah, but you're going to be doing the master plan.
I've actually got some stuff to tell you tonight on the master plan.
I don't want to hear it.
Yes, you do. It's only thirty seconds.
All right. Give that, thanks, Bill.
You, you come up with the language. Are you going to add anything about-
No, this language, this language I'm going to, I'm going to revise.
I mean, are you going to add anything about the concern relative to the comments? But-
I think so. And this would be a-
Specific decisions on the balconies?
This would be a draft, I don't know. I mean, the balconies usually are going to be solved by that time. And so we're not going to-
Optimist.
We're not going to have to mention the balconies.
So what time did we decide?
Eight-thirty.
Eight-thirty.
But I'm, I'm actually with you on the point of if somebody cancels before that-
We're going to have a lot of time to fill.
Exactly.
I'd rather put it on at eight if Ned doesn't mind waiting in his client-
All right, fine. Ned, you, you don't mind waiting. You, you like to wait. This is what, this is what attorneys do most of.
Here, here, it's your beck and call. He'll be there, ready to go.
All right, fine.
All right, eight o'clock.
We'll see you then at eight.
Assistant living and master plan.
Okay, assistant living, Paul Sullivan. We've got, have you, did you come in with some plans?
Yes, I did.
Fabulous.
What I suggested, the big problem we had was that when we looked at the facility down in Stoughton, it seemed awfully tight on its site, and it was surrounded by a fence, whereas this is going to be on a hill, there's going to be no fence, and we want to make sure it's set back adequately.
Right. And that they still have room for a reasonable interior courtyard.
Right, exactly. But they have, they have a green perimeter-
Right.
And then parking, and then building and courtyard.
Excellent.
Now, these plans have the setbacks, the building, the property lines. They're not easy to read, but-
All right, well, this is a smart call.
One of the issues, I suppose, is going to be what is the frontage, what is the side yard, because they're going to purchase, likely purchase seven, seven oh two to create seventy-five feet of frontage on Randolph-
Need to come back to us?
What you're going to have to do is you, you, you need setbacks. You need setbacks, you need a better parking plan, you need to relocate, you need to use parcel one, see, Roman numeral one, Roman numeral one, yes.
And parcel two.
And parcel two, if at all possible.
And you need to rethink your footprints.
And you really need to think about using the dump road as access because it's not going to work. We're not going to, we can't zone something with that thirty-three foot right of way the way it was set up.
Can we just look at one thing?
Yes. Come, come over.
Just a little too much, too much, but I know a thing. Get to you over the weekend.
Ah, is this on our agenda?
Just that.
It's not our agenda, we can't discuss it.
All right, we can look at it.
All right, we can look at it.
Okay, who are you giving this to?
All of us.
You're giving it to all of us.
Did you leave one, Brad?
We will look at it. You've-
We'll look at it. I have thirty seconds unless I'm planning one.
You have thirty seconds, yes.
Okay, RFP went out to various people, the master charge has gone out to various people in Milton. Waiting for responses on all of those. The only thing I wanted to say that I forgot to say at the last meeting is, as you all know, I work for an urban planner. After town meeting approved the funds for this, I just spoke to the principals of the firm, and we are not applying for this. So I just want to let you know that I am not conflicted on this, that my firm will not be applying.
Okay.
And I'm done.
Okay. Is that a motion due in turn, I heard?
Eddie on the way out there.
Okay.
I second it.
They're all in place.
Hi.
Hi.